Kevin Seaman, Inland Wetlands Commissioner called the meeting of the Inland Wetlands Commission to order. On Monday, December eleventh, seven oh five P M. Meeting room D necessary or not?
Yeah, you can add that in there.
In meeting room D as well as online. Alright, so agenda time, right?
Yes, and then I will go into um introducing everybody.
Yep, um let's start with that first, actually, um introductions. Um I'll start with myself, Kevin, Inland Wetlands Commissioner Kevin Seaman. Um online, if you want to start, Laura.
Uh Laura Ferguson, Commissioner.
And then we'll go down, uh let's try, we'll go with Don. Yep, start at the end.
Don Taylor, new member.
Nicholas Jordan, Commissioner.
Danielle Monroe, Commissioner.
Well, attorney Melanie O'Brien, town attorney.
Dave McCollum, Inland Wetlands Agent.
Mary Churchill, Recording Secretary.
Alright, well now we'll call the order, um we could just start on. The agenda, do we have to do election tonight, or is that when everybody is present?
Uh your election of officer, you have all five full members present, so I don't see what would prevent you from conducting your elections tonight. Um if if you want to begin those discussions, I I would advise that you do that at this time.
Yeah, yeah, I would prefer to get that a little bit as well, alright. So I guess the first thing we have to do is elections. Um in general, because we. Have all new proceedings to be put in, actually, so.
That's correct.
I mean, simple enough, election of secretary, I think that we could maintain that.
Well, I.
Do we have to go in this?
Well, I I would advise that you um. For the past four cycles where I have done this, and and I'll speak to all five of you now. Um, we have done this from top to bottom, that is, you go, you go chairman, vice chairman and secretary. Um in the past, you have always had the benefit of having at least two members. For your previous executive officer of administration. Be held on through an an election cycle to continue a duty in some capacity. In this instance, you don't with uh Greg Johnston. And have for Parafort no longer having the privilege of or having the portion of being on this commission with you guys. Um so I I would say that the the floor should be open between the five of you to discuss. Whom on the five of you would serve as chair?
Who wants it and why, I guess would be, I I guess would be the question. Uh uh but not not only who, but why, and does anybody have any nominations that they want to put forward?
All good questions.
Yeah, all good questions, I know that everybody's pretty new here. I know that, I mean, Laura might have more insight as the most aged member of the group. Because the rest of us are fairly new. And still honestly on a learning curve, so I I not that one would be better than the other.
May I offer some advice if I did my best? Um, the chairman, there there is a lot of work that goes on to being the chairman besides. Being the um, the figurehead that that runs the meetings. And does roll calls and so on and so forth. Um they will coordinate with me before meetings to um. Make sure that they understand what's on the agenda beforehand. Um if there are any procedural questions, they usually go through with me, you know, which is site plan review, which ones public hearing, so on and so forth. Um, they they use for for, uh when compared to other full members. Um as as you guys have seen with Pat, there were a few instances where he was not here. And if he knew he wasn't going to be here, um he would give me some prep. For that, so so it's 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 a commitment, I I I will say that. Um so for for whoever takes chair. And whoever among the five who you think would serve as chair, it's it's um. There's a lot that goes into the decision, I I would just, I would just say that, e- experience definitely is one thing. But an ability to commit to this commission is another.
True, and time availability.
That's correct.
Yeah, I would kind of. Confuse myself of the duty only because I just recently got a promotion at work. And I don't know what level of involvement that's gonna entail in my career. It has never really impacted my ability to be here or to take part in my commissioners duties, I just don't want to. Let down anything that might come in addition to it without knowing what. My new job title is going to entail, literally just happened this past week, but it's pretty.
Congratulations.
Thank you, but it's pretty major increase in responsibility, I don't know what that's gonna take from other parts of my life.
Increase in pay, you're right.
What was that?
Increase in pay, I don't know.
No.
They better, that was number one. So that being said. I mean. At either of you in my mind would serve very well to either of you have any opinion on taking it or not. Because I know, Nico, you're very passionate, not only you're knowledgeable, you're passionate, and I know that we're all learning. So I don't, I don't even put knowledge base really into question, Pat vastly over, you know.
We kind of got thrown for a loop, I feel like, I feel like we got thrown for a loop.
Yeah. Yeah.
Defending that one, but he was just elected chair, how long is the term, remember, is that of chair person?
Uh I'm sorry?
The chair, is it elected every year, no?
I I mean, it 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 in effect it is, um but. For 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 the for the commission's intents and purposes, um you you haven't seen fit to. Have those elections, you know, between, uh so, um how do I, how do I phrase this?
Between election cycles?
Right, so so Pat Parafort is the the previous, he was previously reelected in twenty nineteen. And so after he was reelected, he filled the position of chair. And it was just assumed that he would continue in that role for the duration of his term, so from twenty.
We held elections two years ago.
Right, right, but that was more so for the vacancies that were filled beneath him.
Oh.
Than anything else.
You don't remember that.
Right. Um, well, actually, no, no, you you're, you have it right, he was only chairman for two years, that is correct. That is correct.
I just remember, I remember because that was when I came.
No, no, your your memories sort of do well. Yes, so so when uh the 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 biggest prompt for election is is when you have a a member of uh the executive officers that is. Is no longer in that role. Um so Pat, uh when Ken Stevens, the chairman before him. Was no longer in the commission, there was an election of officers held that year, and Pat Parafort stepped in and took the role.
Um can I, Don, do you have any experience with chairing boards of town commissions?
Maybe I better give my position first, yeah.
Yes.
Uh number one, I'm ninety years old.
I am office. Oh, you look good for ninety years old.
We kind of backed into this.
Okay.
Uh, friends and uh Bruce Cornwell was one guy at the road.
Yeah, I'm back.
In fact, we're neighbors, as you know, so uh. I said, yeah, I'd love to go, I've got a lot of experience, uh. I've been in the town since my cousin was police chief. That goes a long way back. And uh, I put, you know what, I've got a lot of experience. I've worked with all the pump stations, the sewer plants, you know. I know we're just about all the wetlands, in fact, I made tours of all these spots before I came today. And I saw a lot of good things in Bethel, I saw a lot of not so good things in Bethel. And I'd like to be a part of maybe making things better if I could. So that's why I'm ready to do it. And I've had some, I've had some health problems and, excuse me. That seem to be hit on the right track now. And I'm on these shots every two weeks, which seem to have alleviated a lot of the problem.
Nice.
So I've been feeling a lot better.
Good.
And uh I certainly think I can give a lot of support, especially with being his neighbor. Um, so that's kind of the background I have here. And uh I'd be happy to support Nico.
You don't feel like chairing this thing?
No.
I'm not wrong with that, okay, I wouldn't mind, um I'm just, you know. Feeling relatively new to this forum as well, and learning, learning fast, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
Uh for the last three years now, I guess it's been uh too short. I would need a competent vice chair, as far as I'm concerned, but now you, if that were the case, or vice versa.
What what's your take on it?
Uh this is a very uncomfortable comment.
Yeah, it is, it is, but it's unfortunately one that we have, I'm also, I'm willing to to accept all the vice chairs, I don't mind. Having those duties a- a- and being a secondary. To a primary, because it allows a little more flexibility, but I will always man up, if you will, if needed. For for duties, like I made a promise to help, so I will make sure I do to pass these I can, I just don't want to overstuck my.
You give them the experience to be under. That'd work.
So, how would you like to be considered for either of the open?
I would be happy to serve if nominated and elected, um I, I. I wish Pat were still here.
I do too.
I feel like he was a really strong chair, and I feel like we're at a deficit without him, but um.
I agree.
But I'm committed to the commission, I have been since I came, I try to make all the meetings and all the sidewalks and. You know, do my homework before I get here, so I definitely feel like I would give it my very best, and I'll do that regardless.
That being said, then, would you feel comfortable, Nita, I would like to nominate you, myself, as chair. Would anybody like to second that notion, or does anybody have any opposition to that?
I'll second.
Well, Laura, is there, is there a formal motion on the floor?
Not yet, but I think that we're gonna get there very quickly, I. M- my question is, would anybody oppose that?
I would put another nomination on the floor for Danielle as well.
Yeah, no, absolutely, Danielle as well, so like. We can, how would we do the vote in this case, do we nominate one, or can we just do a? Historically, how had, let's say you have two people that you would like to nominate. And have the rest of the board decide on, so how you have done that historically?
So if if you are trying to nominate two persons for the position of chair. I would advise whoever wants to make that motion to make a motion to nominate both persons as candidates for chair. And then have the commission, uh and then uh then the commission conduct a roll call. For who they would, who they would vote for that position, and then my advice would be. Is that you would be only able to vote for, you can only be able to vote once.
Right.
So in other words, if you're, if you were to vote for Nico, you cannot also vote for Ben.
Yeah, agreed, okay, so that is, Danielle, would you be okay for being nominated?
Sure, it's the honor.
Okay. I, I would like to make a motion to nominate both Nico and Danielle as chair. For Inland Wetlands Commission, and we could take a roll call.
There's a motion on the floor, needs a second.
Oh.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Digital world, got it? All against? Okay.
So the motion carries.
Motion carries. So now, do we need a motion to take the vote?
No, no.
We already take a vote.
So the motion is made, so now, so now you're voting.
So now we're voting, let's um.
Don't worry, we have, that's, that's why you have there and myself to to take care of, okay?
Oh, look at that, dead they are. Old school, old school, okay, so who's going first, Nico or or Danielle? Um I would just say, let's ask each person, and have them tell us who it is.
Okay.
Natalie. So Laura, who would your vote go for?
I I either or is is good for me.
No, you have to pick one, got my favorites.
Okay, um Danielle.
Okay. Okay, Don?
Danielle.
Danielle.
He's mine.
I mean, Danielle has to vote for Nico.
I will vote for Nico.
Um. That's a very tough choice, because I find you both equivalent, but I will say, um I will say Danielle. But I hold you both like, I flip a coin and come to the same decision, does that make sense?
You guys aren't friends anymore, who's in that?
Danielle, congratulations.
Thanks, thank you all very much for your.
So now, do we need to make any of the motions, anything else?
So so I I so I would just advise the commission affirm that Danielle is has now been elected to serve as.
All clear. And it's now officially confirmed that Danielle is elected as chair of Inland, Inland Wetlands Commission.
Thank you all very much.
We don't have a cookie or a pin or a trophy.
I considered bringing cookies tonight, and then I thought that might be.
You'll have to have on cooking celebration.
So now you have your other two elected officers. Or.
Better hide it in my pocket.
Yes. Well, next is election of vice chair, right?
Well, now that Danielle is chair.
Nico?
No, now I have to.
Oh, now you run the meeting, oh.
Now you're off.
Yes, I'm off the hook.
Okay, so this would be crazy, so now we need to elect our vice chair.
That's correct.
So, um, do we want to have a discussion about that, did we already have the discussion about that? Did you feel like you wanted to add to that conversation, making her already chair?
No, I'm glad I voted for you too, um no, I'm willing to be vice chair, but I think Nico would serve as vice chair just as well, if not better than I would. So if you would like to take that position, I'd be happy to grant it to him, I'll I'll serve whatever. Capacity you guys decide from here forward.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be fine, that's okay with you.
Yeah. I'm okay with that, I'm absolutely fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, um Laura, do you have any opposition?
Uh no.
Don?
No.
Should sit further away from them next time. Um okay, so Kevin, did you want to be considered?
Well, no, I'm okay. It was, wait, where are we now?
So.
Been no motion.
I understand, but I, before we make a motion, I wanted to know who wanted to be included in said motion.
Oh, understood.
Nope. It was not clear to me whether Kevin wanted to be under consideration or anything.
No, I can be admitted.
Okay.
I I would want to lose, if you needed me to, I would, you know what I mean?
Okay, Nico, you're comfortable being nominated?
Sure.
Okay, is there anybody else that wants to put forth any other names for nomination? Laura, were you interested in being considered?
No, I'm okay.
Don?
No.
Okay, alright, well then I will put a motion on the table that we nominate Nico Jordan as um vice chair.
I second.
Right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain, okay, then it passes, congratulations, Nico.
Okay, congratulations, Nico. Last but not least, secretary.
Okay, so.
Motion nominee Kevin Seaman, their secretary in the month.
Second?
I'll take it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, against? Abstain, okay, passes, congratulations, Kevin.
Congratulations.
Yay.
Good luck.
Okay. Yeah, so that's the first three items on the agenda, oh, we need to appoint the inland wetlands agent?
Yes.
I know, David.
When we, happens if we nominate someone else, which we are not going to.
Then you seek the commission.
That that would be a rather awkward position, I don't know how I would rightly explain that.
I thought you were in appointed position.
Yeah, I thought you were appointed.
No, so I I am, um I was hired to serve as land use coordinator. But um my other title, because this commission granted to me. And gives me the authorization is to serve as inland wetlands agent.
Well, with my full-throated endorsement, nominate Dave McCollum to be our inland wetlands agent.
I'd second immediately.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Post abstain and it passes.
Thank you very much, it is my pleasure to serve you guys as always.
Alright, uh I guess that brings us to our regular meeting schedule, which I believe everybody has a copy of, Laura, you do not.
Yes, well, what I will do, not in chair, is I will bring that up on the screen.
Ah, yes.
I'm sorry?
To the meeting, put, put on the meeting schedules?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, that's the next one.
Just trying to get.
I know, Doug, I'm very sorry, thank you for being patient.
Being a part of this lengthy procedural meeting, alright, so, Dan's gonna pull it up?
So in in the meantime, what I will say is, uh this schedule. Um is one that you guys have stuck to in the past. With uh the meeting in August being pushed up a few weeks, so that you guys can enjoy a summer recess, if you will. And the say, excuse me, goes for your meeting in December, because if you hadn't pushed it up this year. Your meeting would have fallen on Christmas Day, and I don't think, I wouldn't have expected very many of you to be available for that. Um, there are no other dates, uh to my or Mary's knowledge, for that matter that had to be switched around. Uh oh, with the exception of May, just because um of Memorial Day on the fourth Monday. Um, there it is, business items. Oh, and Laura will not be able to see this because she's on the phone, but I will post it anyway. On the um Google Drive, so that the recording can see what you guys are looking at. Okay. There we go. Does anybody have any questions?
I believe I would have to check, but I believe I will be away for the April meeting, but that's certainly nothing that we can't work.
Not a problem, and then, does this commission also feel comfortable continuing to have their meetings available by Zoom?
Mm-hmm, I'm in favor of that.
I'm in favor of that.
I believe you guys have had a lot of success with that, I will say a lot of applicants that would otherwise have not been able to be here. I found that very small, so I think it's worth while that you keep it.
So, any other discussion on my calendar? The dates look okay to everybody, for the most part?
Good, right. I'll be, I'll be with you.
Alright, well, when we get closer to it, maybe we look at, we can do that, right, we've done that in the past.
That's correct.
Okay, I think that falls during spring break, so it might be that, so, okay. So do we need to nominate approval of the schedule?
You'll make a motion for it, yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the inland wetlands commission twenty twenty four meeting schedule.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, motion carries.
Okay, very good.
Here's Pat. And then we have our regular meeting minutes from our last meeting, hopefully everybody had a chance to listen to this over.
They were also on the Google Drive for the commission's reference.
Right, uh I don't know who was in attendance at that meeting, she was there, I was there, Nico was there, I don't know if Laura was there.
She was not, so what I would advise Mr. Taylor and Mr. Ferguson to do is abstain, you only need three members to vote. Um, for uh the minutes and um some other items on the agenda that we'll get to. So if it's just um Kevin, yourself, Danielle and Nico that votes on this, you guys are covered.
Alright, so I make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from our last meeting on November twenty seventh.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed, abstentions?
Me.
Done.
And. Right?
Yes.
That's what carries. Alright, back. So now is when we get to the part that gets more complicated for me?
Uh, let me see where we are.
We're at Site Command Review, Jennifer Swine.
Yes. Okay, so I would, I would give the commission a recap. Um, this uh commission meant so site plan review for this application of their previous meeting. Uh for those of you who remember, there was an ad nauseam, if I can think of a better, if I can think of a better word to describe it. Discussion on lighting, among other items. Um, this commission have requested me to prepare a draft resolution of approval for this application. Um which I do have prepared for your review. The applicant and uh the property owner are here in attendance tonight, so I would advise. That if you have any questions for them, that you ask them at this time, I will note for the record that the um. That Mr. De Vesta has just submitted a report from uh Mr. McManus. One of the items that staff had recommended, they put in the record. And another item that the commission had asked to be uh submitted for their consideration. Along with a report for the natural diversity database, I believe it says Shannon Tierney, if I'm getting her name right. Uh it was reported dated December sixth, Doug, you you emailed that to your last friend, correct there? So I will put that up on the screen, um I do not have uh Mr. McManus's report electronically, as we just received that tonight. Um, so if you guys have any questions, um I would advise that you ask the applicant um at this time.
Right, did you say that you're gonna put the map up on the screen?
Uh it's a, it's a report, a natural diversity database report.
Okay.
From the State Department of Energy Protection.
Thank you for sharing.
Of course. And just so you guys know, this was part of your meeting materials, it was in the Google Drive over the weekends. Could be up on the screen. Better do the slide scroll for it here. Sorry if I'm going too fast.
A little bit quick.
I'm still reading.
Alright, sorry.
Miss Franklin, Kevin. Is that better?
I watched a lot, I need to turn over this again. I know it said it above, but it was um redone to a depth of X amount of inches to ensure that turtles will go under the.
When you just told.
Oh, okay, look awesome.
And that wraps up the report.
Okay.
If there are any other materials the commission wants to review, I'm happy to put them up on the screen for you.
Kevin, so, any questions?
Well, if if you have questions for the applicant, I I would advise that you ask them at this time, or if the applicant has anything else to do that they would want to present, I would advise that you have them do that.
Okay, Dr. Besta, fresh engineer, I have no, no additional information besides what I was submitted to um. Okay, Dr. Best, professional engineer. I have no, no additional information besides what I was submitted to um. To answer your question for your D N B P and then also the letter from Jim McManus.
Did everybody get a chance to read over uh Mr. McManus's letter?
Our agents.
Okay.
I have nothing else at this time. I discussed at length last time, all the stuff that I had concerns on.
I don't have anything else. I mean, it's presumptive that you're gonna follow the recommendations from, yes.
We will, yeah.
Yeah, what were you guys um like you're doing for the bats specifically?
About bat houses?
You have some bat houses in mind? How many?
I'm not sure how many, maybe five or six. Different locations on the property.
Is that something that? Is that something that we should request to add? Is this relation upon something?
In the past, when the commission has um reviewed properties. Where a natural diversity database review was part of the application. Um, the commission has had the stipulations uh in that review incorporated as a condition of approval.
That's, that's what I, you know, we could do that. Tonight, though, and should we choose acceptance?
Uh.
Based with the addition of.
Staff, staff has taken liberty of, of adding, of preemptively adding that as a condition of approval. But if the commission is so inclined to have that removed.
Nope, staff is genius.
Well, every now and then, don't give me too much.
Staff is genius.
Um, if, if, uh if I may, I also, cause I, I wanted to um. Bring this up while cooler heads prevailed, if you will. Um, to go back to the lighting item that we had discussed last time, not, and not to bring it up again as a sour spot. I think of, of, I would recommend the commission as a reasonable compromise. Consider that there is a significant portion of the site that will be left untouched. By the way of there being a limit of disturbance that the applicant has added to their site plans. If the commission is um. Um, is considering um. Where light could go, those trees that will remain will effectively serve as a buffer for that. But if you want to ensure that those trees will not be cut. There is a condition that a former chair, actually three former chairs. Um, had implemented as part of their conditions of approval, and that is orange construction fencing. You guys may remember that being a condition for previous applications where um. Um, development was perhaps in closer proximity to a regulated wetlands. I- i- in this case, the orange construction fencing could serve as um a bona fide physical demarcation. Of where that limit of disturbance could be. It's a, it's a win-win because the, the applicants, you know, going to be able to install lights, you know. Where they are needed. And the commission will have the reassurance that the canopy that is. Proposed to remain will in fact remain because there's a fence that effectively says anything that. Anything that is within this area is, is where your project is. Anything that beyond that area is not touched.
And that's something that former commissions have incorporated. Are you saying that that's something that the applicant was? Was bringing to the table or something that we could?
It, it, it was, it was an item that had been discussed for previous applications. One that comes to mind. Is uh twenty eighth Odd Fish Hill Road. Where there was a significant wetlands resource on a property, and the commission was concerned. About the proximity of the limited disturbance to the wetland itself. And just as an additional physical demarcation of where the disturbance was, the fence was put up. As a supplement to the silk fence.
During the construction.
Correct, yeah. For, 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 for someone who is in an excavator or operating tree clearing equipment to say, hey. This is a fence where I shall not pass. And everything that is beyond that fence stays untouched.
Didn't we do that also at the well digging?
Yep, that's correct.
We did.
That's correct. So, so you, so you have used it before and, and I, and I um, of course, obviously discussed this with the, with the applicant. But I don't, uh, it's, it's in staff, it's, it's in staff's experience, that that is not an unreasonable condition to have. But of course, it's at your discretion and you can take that for what you wish.
Sounds like it. Be in favor of adding that.
To make, is that?
Maybe you have that at the silk fence line.
That's correct.
I mean, that, it wouldn't impede your progress at all.
No, I mean, we have silk fence up and that's, I mean, that's a demarcation as well.
Yeah, so. Silk fence is always on the construction limit line. But on the drawing, construction, you know, silk fence, construction on the line, that's where the lines you put your construction, your silk fence.
Understood, great.
There's some there now, still it looks like.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Along the.
Last, from eighteen years ago, whatever was, yeah.
It's still up from eighteen years ago.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Apparently it is.
I mean, if there's already a fence there, I don't see the necessity.
No, it's not in there.
Okay.
So it's functional.
I mean, it's actually, is there already going to be a silk fence demarking that line of disturbance? So there, there technically still a fence there, so.
Your silk fence, it goes right on the construction.
Get it up by drawing up.
Sure.
Yes.
Did your drawing also, did this change?
Change.
Doesn't this say?
Well, that's.
This is just saying.
No, that's.
He's just saying.
That's correct, because.
Field.
The old line, lines of my drawing here shows the wetland flagging that was prior to the road being put in when they did their subdivision.
Gosh.
And, and that's all Jim was saying. He just wanted to bring it to your attention that, yes, you asked, is there any, is there any difference between the line? Previously and now, the only difference he said was because of the lines. Because what he's saying right here is that you've got your. You got fifty nine to sixty.
Yep.
And you got fifteen to fourteen. And now the road was, the driveway was, road driveway was put in when the subdivision was done for the two lines. So actually, now sixty would go to fifteen, fifty nine would go to fourteen. That's all he's, that's all he's saying. So going over here, um, where's my silk fences? Right here. This is actually, this is actually the older drawing date, too.
Oh, my mistake.
Should say revision on there.
Yes, I pulled up the wrong one by mistake. Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, so what we did is, so the silk fence line is here. The X is on it, and the squilly line is your limits of disturbance. So basically, it's at the silk fence line. That goes around, goes all the way around the property as we show here with the silk fence. So that's actually a limit of disturbance, so, yeah. I, where I was going with that is I don't want to ask him to put another fence up again. You're already literally a fence there, because if you're guys. I would fire. My buddy Nate does the tree clearing. Uh, if he pushes down. Any, that's same. I mean, that's your, that's your demarcation.
Yeah, it protects the inside, so, yeah, so, yeah, so we, we feel that the silk fence is, is adequate for what we're looking to do.
I agree, I'd agree with that.
Would the silk fence be installed before tree clearing took place?
Probably not, because it most likely was gonna happen, they might get disturbed and stuff like that. Before you move, move the stumps, the silk fence would go up. And that's typically the, the procedure you would do.
Okay.
I mean, Michael does all this stuff all the time, and you do, do tree clearing, you just taking trees down. Brush it, you're cutting up the brush, then you put the silk fence up, because it's gonna get disturbed.
So, so how would whoever is operating that equipment know where the limit of disturbance was if the silk fence wasn't there? Because the surveyor is gonna flag the lot, Dave. Just, he's gonna flag the limbs of this. Oh, he is. Okay, have, yeah, we're after. He's gonna put grade stakes around it. This is the limit of disturbance. Okay, silk fence line, clear the land. And then we put our silk fence, and then we stump block it. You know what I mean? So we're not obviously going, approaching different areas and still working, so on.
Might look, we do most of the work and stuff anyway, so.
Yeah.
I'm just, he doesn't, knows what's going on.
Were you guys able to come up with a plan of the existing trees that are gonna remain on the site, some of the mature ones, especially now that we have?
We're gonna mark them, but we, David and I thought about this, we're gonna mark them before we have them removed. Have, and mark ones that we're gonna save, and then Dave will come out, take a look at it.
Uh, can I be included in that process and on the walks and there with you to do that?
Yeah, if uh you're, you would be, you would be citing your experience with trees.
As a native tree expert, yeah.
Sure, okay. I don't see why that would.
In our region.
Yeah. Um. I don't see how we can make another combination. I think that's for a reason.
And I'd like, can I, can we do with you there, too?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if we have to.
Think we should, because that means a lot for the lot, because I have concerns about. The place, like where the lot is on the brook.
The whole back half of the land, three quarters of that land is the backside.
Conservation.
Can't be done on the west side, west side of the Brooklyn, it's all open space, that's all.
That lot's five acres, we're walking on two acres.
No, my only concern, I have a couple of concerns, but mainly, the main one is the. Possibility of the way that the water runs north, south, and north there, and you know, it hits that lot and then takes a sharp turn left, uh west. And then there's another sharp turn to the north, and then the conservation is going off to the west. And that is a potentially very erosive spot in the river. Um, without any tree.
Uh.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
It makes it easy to understand it, because you're just.
Um, so. You know, and from what I remember from our sidewalk and the photographs, like.
Going down, go down.
There aren't that many trees, so.
I basically, the brook is coming down here.
Yeah.
Taking that hard left.
Yeah.
This way. I mean, your elevation difference is about six feet difference between the, the brook and the, and the land itself.
Between the wall.
And, and it's also been there for. Hundreds of years, it hasn't, it hasn't, hasn't eroded, it hasn't really done any erosion through this area in here, so it's, we very likely won't be any more, any more erosion going on there. From that rip, the brook itself.
So my concern was that. The limit of disturbance line, basically, I understand, like comes up to where those, there's actually some existing stone walls.
Right, the stone wall, which actually, we won't go past the stone wall, obviously.
Right.
It's not shown on the plan here, but again, you know, this is being conservative here. I mean, we might even come up a little higher here, stuff like that, but that, again. The top of the embankment is really where the, where your silk fence is gonna be going.
Right, and then that's where the lawn is gonna come to, which is essentially the edge of the embankment of the river, because then is the, the, the. The um contour lines there as you go down, that's basically the flood plain of the river, if you will. Um.
You're saying this is a flood plain river right here?
So outside of the limit of disturbance signs.
Well, this is, this is steep slope here, so you're not gonna, you're not gonna, not gonna get any flooding going this way, you get flooding going this way. Remember, this, this is, this is rising here.
Right. So that's not the part of the site that I'm talking about, because there you've placed the limit of disturbance line well up along another existing stone wall, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
This side here?
Yeah.
I think it's down, I, I think it's down further.
There is a stone wall out the northern.
And here, right.
There's an old stone wall. Do you know what, do you, do you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Dior on the site? Like, like, how it runs, there's almost like a flat area along the base.
Yeah.
And then it drops down to the river from there. So I'm assuming that flat area.
Well, like. Not this, this side here's the, 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 the west side, the west side would be your flood, floodplain area. Your right side is not, because again, the slopes, the steep, you know, the, the narrower the contours are, the, the, the steeper the property is.
Oh, you're saying so the water wouldn't wanna go there, it would go, it would go toward the, the shallow, the lower.
The, the east side, it'll go, go, go to the low side, which is the west, east side will not go.
Well, when I was talking about that, I was referring specifically to the eastern side of the map, where the river comes in.
Right, right here.
Yep, it's a hard left, flowing north.
But it's also, again, it's a steep slope there as well.
Right, which.
There's a significant grade difference, like from there to like, to the west side of the river, there's a significant grade difference. The water's going.
Right.
West.
It goes down, yeah.
The flood, the flood zone, the flood area would be on the, the south, the south side, not, not, not the north side.
But basically, I just wanna make sure we don't compromise that.
I don't, I don't say, I mean.
Going all the way.
I don't see we'd be compromised, no.
Well, there's, because there's, there's some trees there, but not too many mature trees, like there's, there have a little difficulty growing like in that.
Because, because, because it can't be.
Water, it's more closer to a river down there.
Well, elevation wise, it's probably, what we're talking, probably six to eight feet difference there, six, probably six feet difference in elevation. River like six feet lower than what, what that, what this land here, it's here.
I just, I'm not like necessarily completely comfortable that if we remove all of the mature trees that are holding, really holding that.
We're gonna re-select the trees, we, we, we're not removing all the trees, you know, we're gonna keep some of the significant trees, the smaller trees of what, about the eight inch diameter, depends on. What, what's over here, with, with our grading and our drainage in here, we'll have to be selective what we're doing over there.
This would be part of that sidewalk that we would.
Correct.
Mr. George, so, so we would essentially go out there and, and, and walk through the entire site again. With, at the very least, Mr. Diorio. And um whoever else would be part of that operation to say, you know, these trees are remaining, and these trees are being cleared.
Okay, so that would be like a condition of approval that I had then, I guess, because.
I mean, along the river line, but I'm, I'm the taxpayer, Davis. Right? Uh, the, the owner's the taxpayer. I mean, anything in my property line that I wanted to cut, that's what I'm saying, I'm gonna cut law, I mean, I'm entitled to cut. Correct? With, within a one hundred foot upland review, you didn't, you didn't, it's a regulated activity.
It's, the only thing is that if it has the, the ability to potentially alter the, like, physical characteristics of the water course. Then we are responsible for kind of noticing that.
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, the west side is, you got thirty feet of grade there. The water's going.
The west side's good, because you guys aren't gonna go.
By the barn there and a little bit on the low side, okay.
That's the side, that's.
It should really be done outside. Right, we're just going back and forth. We, you need to be out on the side to see that, see what's going on, see which trees are removed. I think, I think that's.
Well, right, yeah, but if I wanted to make sure that we don't like have, I wanna make sure we're doing this in the right order, because that would be one of the. Um.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, interrupt you for a second.
Okay.
Can you pause that for just a second?
Do you need to, do you need to uh be excused for a few minutes?
No, I, I have to.
Okay.
Yeah, you do.
Okay, understood.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Run away to go right in.
No, okay.
Okay. Let him know. Let's go through Dave's, Don was to go as well on the sidewalk.
Oh.
For his.
If, if, I mean, it's, it's at the, it's at the applicant's discretion. If, if they're, if they're comfortable with you being there, then. You're asking, you're asking, yeah.
For me.
Yeah, I'm, do, do you want to join that?
I want to join that one.
Okay, all right, so, so I, I would ask, are you, would you mind if, if Mr. Taylor joined us for that?
Yeah, we're trying to through the process.
All right, yes, it's okay, very good, no problem, okay.
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 Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Sorry, thanks, Nico.
No, it's great, thank you. For me, I voted favorably on the application. That was just one of the concerns, real concerns I had, and then. Thinking about the M D T B hit as well, with the bats was the other piece, to try to preserve as much of the candy of the mature um exploding bark white oaks that are on the side.
Well, again.
Whatever, if it's feasible, if they're in good shape, if they're healthy, if the earth works, if construction. Mike, you have, you're gonna wait, and that's why we do that, because you're gonna be like, oh, I can operate around these roots. History can be saved, don't really damage it, and then, so we'll just take all that into account. I don't wanna. It's kind of, it's kind of like that, like. I don't think that we can allow like a clear cut of the property necessarily in, with, with all these one hundred foot upland review areas, which are essentially. Can be viewed as like river buffer zones to like, make sure the river stays the river and doesn't like start.
I don't see it happening.
Change, okay. Having it from an engineering standpoint.
I don't, I don't imagine it's gonna change direction on, on our side of property there, on the, on the west side possibly, but I think on the, on the east and north side, I don't think it's gonna happen.
Let, let's, let's get back on track here.
Can you be there, too, or do you want, will you be on the sidewalk or?
It's up to him.
Okay.
He wants to come or not, so. That pays for itself.
So, yeah, yeah, well. The applicant has a limit of disturbance that they are showing on the plants. There would be selective clearing that occurs within that limit of disturbance, i.e., obviously, they're gonna have to clear cut where the house. The driveway and other associated site improvements are going. But at, during that sidewalk, that is to take place to be determined. Um, we would discuss any trees that could remain within that area where they're doing the work.
Or give them options, yeah.
Well, it, I'm just trying to go through everything here under a macro scale. For, for any work that is done beyond that proposed limit of disturbance, if the, if the applicant sees that they, or has an interest to do that, then that's fine. But it's, it is, I would advise the commission that it's a regulated activity. And that whenever they choose to do that work, they would need to come before either myself in the form of an agent approval, or before the commission. Or to, to have that work approved, depending on what extent that is. Right now, this commission is just reviewing the constructions associated with a single-family house. And the extent of the limited disturbance that is involved with that. A- anything that's beyond that, I, I don't know how we're entering into that discussion. Because we're just talking about what's going on within that limit of disturbance and nothing else.
Right.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure that was clear.
Yeah.
Okay. You guys have any other questions?
Um, well, and then I was just missing the um. I would need a condition of approval of uh of no pesticides on the property, to no insecticide, which was part of the um. The bat, the longer bat.
Well, it's, it's, it's. Well, it's, it's, it's worth having that discussion with the commission, then with the applicant to see if the, if that kind of condition would be appropriate.
Don't we have the stipulation where? Yes, the net, uh, what's, what's that verb?
I, I, I believe the, the, the verb is that this commission has used consistently as of late is that there's no use of synthetic fertilizers.
And it was fertilizer based, then what's, what's your concern?
But that's different. Uh pesticides, because of the insect populations, the invertebrate populations for the bat, for the bats. It's listed on the MDP um as a requirement.
Yeah, that's true.
Is to not use any pesticides on the site?
Yes.
During construction.
Not during construction. As, as a free condition of, of existing.
That, that was the entire difficult process to enforce.
I agree with you, I, I see what you're saying, I, and I understand the concern, because you wanna make sure that the, the bat population isn't disturbed. And especially if they're, they're going through the notions of creating. Yeah, no, but all I was going is. If we are gonna put some sort of stipulation in. Long term, uh, on an approval for these guys, I wanna make sure that it's something that is. That takes the least amount. Of activity to enforce it, or it's something that just can be part of what they're doing now that. In essence, will have a prolonged effect for the entirety of the site itself, because putting a stipulation like that means monitoring, so I want something that's not.
It does not necessarily mean I did, I did.
So, how does it not mean that if we put it in? And. This has nothing to do with you, if we put something like that into an application, any application, and the applicant chooses to completely ignore it. What was the point of putting it in?
It's, it's, it showed that we're doing our due diligence, as a wetlands commission, so we're, we're taking active measures and we're recognizing. Situations on the ground in each given application, like an endangered species, and we're actually at, it's, it's words on a piece of paper. But it's also something that we can talk to, like, Mr. Dioro, talk to the applicant of future sites about, and they can also see, oh, this was a thing. And they can, of course, choose, like, anybody can pretty much, like, do whatever they want with their property, like. But we're charged with. Maintain this, you know, this, the health and safety of the well and then like the watershed for the public, right, so. That's the difference between the private property owner rights and, and the public, if we, just because we put it in here. It doesn't mean that it has to be necessarily enforced, um, it's just that, it shows that we're doing our jobs in that. And that there, that it's a, a condition of approval that the, that the owner. Um, s- signs on to when they're building their.
Your, your charges are focused on activities. That can adversely impact a wetlands that are associated with.
Construction?
Construction in this case is the driving factor, because the, the, the intent of the application was. That's before you is, is to construct a single family dwelling, it, it's, it's not necessarily for the. Imperperity application of pesticides, for however that prop, for however long that property is used as a. Residence, they, they're, they're coming before you to, to construct, not necessarily to maintain. So.
Well, then if that's, if you guys can't put that in as a condition, then, then clearly can't go to, to build there, because it's not.
Well, well, you, you would, you would have to have something in the record that shows. That the, the use of pesticides. Would adversely impact the regulated.
It's right there, you just read it, we scrolled way past.
It said avoid use, it doesn't say shall, shall not use it, it says avoid to use a pesticide that will affect. Either the invertebrate food sources has changed, so avoid it, doesn't say shall, shall.
We can, when we, we, we can use the same language.
That are in that report, legally, they're bound to.
Shall is a directive term, if like, if like Mr. Divestive is saying. If, if that report said shall not. Then yes, that, that would be one thing, but it's, but the term that's, that the report uses is avoid. So that's, so it's, so it's not to say that pesticides can't be applied. You know, at will, a- and obviously, it's not in the applicant's interest to apply more pesticides that is necessary for the property. Because there's an expense that comes with that.
And the quantity too, I mean, you're diluting, you're diluting the pesticides, so dilution is gonna be a factor too, I mean. Anything with. The diluted, it might be as potent, you put it concentrated down, yeah, have an effect on something, but it diluted, they have less of an effect on the things. And the amount, and the amount you like, like they say, not, not you use.
Is there?
I would say endeavor to avoid the use of pesticides.
And, and that, and, and that is a recommendation that's in the, right, it's in the report, and. As was mentioned before. Staff has, staff has proactively added. The report, the NDB report as a condition of approval, that the applicant adhere to.
Oh, that's, that, the.
That's, that's correct.
Conditions of approval.
Well, I'm, well, it's, it is, it has, it has been in staff or in the commission's past. Experience that for properties where there is an NDP report that is involved. That the commission incorporate the finance of that report as a condition of approval.
Okay, so we're avoiding. Bat houses. Um, what about heavy machinery on the site, is there gonna be a regular routine storage of construction equipment?
No. They, they, they have it on shop.
Is there a yard, do you have a yard offsite?
Yes, they do.
Well, not, not to mention the zoning regulations regulate. The, the number of vehicles, commercial vehicles that can be kept on the property in formal purpose. So. Putting my zoning cap on here briefly. My, uh, for what I can remember off the cuff for zoning regulations, you're, you're only allowed to have one commercial vehicle. With a gross vehicle weight rating of eleven thousand pounds or less. So.
Nice.
That's, that's one vehicle. And that's the zoning regulation, so I would, I would say for those intents and purposes, you're covered.
You were worried about just vehicles being let down property and the effect that that might have during the construction process?
No, post-construction process. I don't know, it sounds like a lot of. I don't know how, there's any. Maybe behind the. Um, and we, we, we didn't receive the lighting plan either that you had asked for in, in one of your, the lighting locations, the lighting fixtures.
It, it's, again, again, it, it's, it's at the commission's discretion, my, my comments are my comments, they're not. They're not orders per se. A- and, and, and the commission has the discretion to say, is, is that comment really necessary, what has, how has the applicant tried to respond to that? Staff, I have given my perspective on, on how to address that, which again. The trees that are beyond the limit of disturbance, they're not part of that application, and they're not, the intent of this application is to not disturb those. So they are remaining. So that should serve as the canopy. For um. Whatever lights that would be on the property as, as the buffer between. Living up disturbance and the regulated onsite wetlands areas and help them.
And that's acres between those.
Right.
Right, it's, it's acres, we're talking acres.
I just think. I have a lot of. Seems like. Unanswered.
You're, you're, you're ready to make whatever.
More you wanna discuss that you feel is hanging?
Those were my main points, the NDB hit, uh, the heavy machinery inside the pesticide use, the lighting. Property lighting and the. Mature trees, especially on the south. Shore of the property where the, the limit of disturbance comes right up to the. The, the river, the flood plain.
So having, having just had the conversations on all of those, do you feel like you've? Got the information that you were seeking? I'm good.
I'm okay, I've been, I've been okay.
Laura, did you have anything you wanted to add? You're muted.
You're muted.
No.
Okay.
I didn't.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
And, and Laura, did, did you review all of the materials for, for this meeting? Did you get a chance? I'm sorry?
I didn't get a chance to.
Okay, okay, not a problem, just wanted to make sure that that was clarified for the record. Okay.
Okay.
So if, if you guys don't have anything else you want to discuss at this point, this application. I would advise, just because we have other items on the agenda, that if you want to discuss a resolution of approval. Later on in this meeting, that you make a motion to table that as future business on this item, on this agenda. So that we can come back to it, so that we can revisit it later.
I'm comfortable with that, that's fine, yeah, we, we could table the um. That part of process, Dan, I mean, these guys don't need to sit and listen to us talk about that.
Will make that motion?
I'm giving you the opportunity, you're.
We table the conversation on four different ways until later in the meeting when we reach.
Uh, you would, you would just put it back under new business.
A second, or, or business, I'm sorry.
A second, okay. Hold a favor?
Very good.
Okay. So that brings us to Seven Rockwell Road. The uncommeted excavation and orphal activity that we've been revealing.
Yes.
So, have we received anything?
The, the, the only thing that staff has received to this point, and this was this afternoon, the staff received this. Ryan, I'll give you a copy as well. Okay? Is this letter from Attorney Neil Marcus of Conan Wolf. Uh, he advised me that he is now representing the applicants. Uh, as their counsel for, uh, you know, for the intents and purposes of this application. Um, I would advise you guys read that and then um be mindful that Attorney Melody O'Brien is here with us. Um, as counsel for you guys, so if you have any questions on what's in that, I would advise you on this.
How about Laura, should we scroll it for her?
Uh, well, we, we can scroll, uh, well, I did not receive this um in time to have this as part of the Google Drive.
Can we summarize it for her?
Right, so, so the, I, I, I will read the, actually, do you, would just one of you wants to read it for the record?
Eight time stories. All right, um. Laura? Make a motion for this, or I could just go ahead and read it.
No, you're just reading.
Okay, I can just read it, all right, the letter that we received is. Um, for Seven Rockwell Road, it's. Starts, Dear Chairman. I was pleased to meet with the owner of the property at Seven Rockwell Road this morning to discuss the history of the site and the application that is currently before you. For permit to conduct regulated activities. I understand that the application is on your agenda for your meeting of December eleventh. At this point, I am not prepared to appear before the commission, as I am still in the process of doing some research as to the history of the site. And the work that has been done along the riverbank. I am requesting that you continue the pending application until your next regularly scheduled meeting. And the applicant is granting an extension of the applicable time period for the completion of the review of the application. I anticipate that the application itself may be withdrawn and refiled under sections three, two, three C. And section three, three, three A of the regulations. The determination can be made prior to your next regularly scheduled meeting. I thank you in advance for, excuse me, I thank you in advance for your anticipated, I assume, cooperation. With this request, and I look forward to working with the commission on a resolution of this matter. Yours truly, Neil R. Marcus. So they're essentially just asking us to grant them an extension while the attorney has an opportunity.
Let me, let me rephrase that, you, you have been granted an extension, the, the applicant has consented to give you an extension. Essentially to your January twenty second, twenty twenty four regular meeting. They, they are, they are, attorney Marcus is essentially saying, look. We, we are going to do our best, in, in good faith, we, we want to have an opportunity to. Give you the materials that you need to render a decision on this application. And if for some reason we are not successful in those efforts to get all those materials in time for that meeting, this application will be withdrawn. Um. And, uh. That I don't. It's, it's all staff's opinion that. Um, you know, that there's no harm in you, I'm accepting this extension to, to keep this hearing open, you, you want to give the applicant. Every opportunity to give you the information that you um requested, I, I know there was. Um. A, a lot of discussion about having everything available for tonight. Um, but. With, with the two week window that they were given with that. Um. It's, it was, it was a lot for them to have to put together a short amount of time.
It was a lot for the attorney to have to pull together, but the applicant was, has, this has been open for quite some time without production of anything. Substantive for us to work with.
Uh, that is understood.
And, and, and he was given, that, that's where my difficulty lies, is the vast amount of. Notification and attempts, uh, uh, you know, especially primarily by you to gather. Information to have, you know. We, to allow him to put his best foot forward. And providing us, you know, what I believe to be simple requests, because they were outlined pretty. Straightforward by you, exactly what we need, they were bullet point requested.
Right.
And. I mean, I don't mind. Being lenient in life as a personal experience, but at the same time, it's like.
We have been leaning, isn't this the third time that we're.
It's like, like, to what level does leniency expire? That's where my.
What, what is, what was your question?
Is, is this not the third meeting that we have held, where we requested information and didn't receive anything?
So, so. It's see, it, in terms of matters for this property. Um. It first came to you as, as a notice of violation, then it came as an order to correct, where we had a show cause hearing. And then that prompted the property owner to submit an application, which they did at their October twenty third meeting. And um, they were, they were given comments. Um, for what was anticipated to have, for what the commission anticipated to have a response on the twenty seventh. That did not, that was not present. Uh, that was not the case, and so the commission asked for materials to be presented for your meeting tonight. And now I think that the applicant has brought forth is a letter from their counsel, essentially granting an extension. Um, for this application, or saying that they may opt to withdraw and resend this, so that way they can. Provide you with the full application for all the materials that you need.
Proceed with question, if they opt to withdraw, is he enforced by. Prior stipulations to start removal of what he has done and then have to redo it? Like, it, it, let's say that he withdraws, we, we don't deny just, he withdraws. And he wants to resubmit in the future, which could be two days or two years from now.
Right.
Legally, is he obligated to remove what? Yeah, to restore the property to its pre-existing state?
That is an excellent question.
Um, if he withdraws, because if we deny, I think it was written that he must restore.
So you have to go back to the revised order to correct dated September fourteenth, twenty twenty three, which I have up on the screen. The last uh condition that you are, the, the last item of that order directs him to submit an application. Um, to the commission, which he did. Or uh to remediate slash mitigate the property. or uh to remediate slash mitigate the property to restore it to its conditions as of November fourth, two thousand fifteen, which is when he purchased the property. Uh, but there is no deadline for him to have those activities done by. Um. What what I, what I would say is is that, um I I I would ask if uh.
How how fortunate.
That Attorney O'Brien is here denying me. What kind of teeth does it have, I guess, is the question, because that that's for me, because uh let's say I deny it, or they withdraw it. What ensures that the work is done to bring it back to its pre-existing condition within a reasonable timeframe? Because in my mind, we deny it, or we grant the extension, but nothing happens, is what it is, and then it kind of negates the whole purpose of this conversation, because it was either he's gonna get the okay to do his work, and we're we're gonna let him do it, and he gets approvals, because everything's gonna be okay down the road, or we're able to say, no, it is not okay. You must remove this, but within a fashion. What I'm worried about is the teeth behind the order to ensure that the work is done regardless of which direction, to bring it back into the old.
And in the meantime, we have neighboring adjoining property owners who are intending that there's ongoing damage for the longer, that the conditions exist.
Oh, well, I haven't thoroughly read the order that you just set up on the screen, but if there's no time period in there, then you don't know exactly what the time period could be. Is that something that may have to be judicial determination about whether it's reasonable under the circumstances? Um. If we so I understand everything you're saying. I I don't know the full history that all of you do. Um. A couple of positive things here. Um, Attorney Marcus has been engaged as counsel, and he's also apparently engaged Mr. McNamara, according to the letter. So there are two people that are brought on that are quite familiar with this kind of proceeding and what a regulated activity is and isn't. And so my sense is where we're not talking to just simply a person who you know, just kind of maybe didn't quite know what to do, maybe was stalling, you maybe, I don't know what, I don't know what was going on, but nothing productive was happening. So now he's reached out to someone who's trying to to determine what happened here. Um, is this a regulated activity? Or is the activity that's been done in appropriate and regulated area and all of that? So we do know that the attorney has been away for some time on vacation, just got back. He's trying to find out exactly what's going on here, which is why he wasn't present today. Um, having engaged um somebody who's familiar with this type of work, that's encouraging to me that at least he's got a couple of professionals now that are advising him.
Mr. McNamara was already engaged by the property owner before the lawyer was involved.
But now he's got some direction from the property owner, uh, excuse me, from the attorney about what we're what we're doing here, what we're basing here. Uh, you could grant an extension, but with some conditions, the conditions being there is a cease and desist order that's pending, that there are violations of the cease and desist order, that they not withdraw an application without resubmitting, refiling immediately, that there can't be withdrawn application, and then we're just sitting around our hands until the meeting, having extended until in the next meeting. And you could say this would be the last extension. This is what we're we're expecting to see with grants extension, that you're prepared to go forward on or at the January meeting.
And as part of that extension, can we incorporate our can we amend to our stipulation that if it is not adhered to, there is a we put a timeframe now, or is it too late?
I don't know, because that's also an issue, it's an issue document. I don't know that you can go back and and revisit it right now if it's already been issued. I don't know, I really have to look at the file to know the answer.
Okay.
I just.
I'm not saying change, yeah, I'm not obviously saying change, but we did say, let's say as a stipulation granting you this extension um with the necessity to resubmit if you withdraw, should not, you know, neither of those occur, you must bring back the property to its pre-existing condition within whatever X timeframe.
Well, well.
Like, more or less, is there a way to put some teeth into the timeframe as part of this?
You would, you would, you would be talking about the applicant withdrawing their application before you got to that point. Because you 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 would, you would want to, you would want to render a decision on the application, if possible, first, be before, before you gave any sort of direction. So if you, go ahead. Oh, okay. So so you're you're, your your first objective is to say, okay, we we want to give the applicant the opportunity to give us the information we need. It's it's annoying that we have had to wait this long and have had to try to and have had to convey in so many different ways. We need this information. We cannot review this application until we get it. Now you have someone that's saying, okay, we we hear you. We understand that you need this information. We are, we are going to do our best to have that for you at your next regular meeting on January twenty second. If if you wanted to craft stipulations, you would say what what you could consider saying, you could consider saying, okay, so noted. Your 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 um your your uh, the application will, will the, the hearing for this application will be extended to January twenty second. If no such materials are prepared, or if you do not have all the items you need in time for um that meeting, it would be to the commission's understanding that you would withdraw the application. And then you would either um give us, provide a timeline for when a new application will be submitted, or provide a timeline for when the property will be remediated and brought back to its its state, you know, as of November fourth, twenty fifteen.
Or or as Attorney O'Brien said, rather than provide us with a timeline for when they're going to refile, we could require them to immediately.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, correct.
Because we're extending an application process. If there's no longer an application, why would we add an extension? Why are we doing that? It's it's to give you an opportunity to get the application and all the materials, the commission, correct? So if you withdraw the application, doesn't sound like to me like you're necessarily going in that direction. So if you're gonna abandon that and then remediate them, we're in a different
we need an application for remediation, right?
I don't, and if they don't reapply within a timeline, that's the other thing too, because they could.
We don't have to provide them with a timeline. We can say you have to immediately refile it. So if I'm understanding that correctly, then they would either need to come to the January twenty second meeting with all of the information from the engineers and whatever.
With what?
We requested.
What do we need?
With the plan for, well, we need, we asked for engineers to take a look at this property and tell us structurally whether it is acceptable for him to continue with the work as proposed.
The existing work that he's already done.
That he has begun.
Maybe needs to be done on the other end to finish.
You 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 need three things. The 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 simplest way to 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 categorize what this commission needs, the first thing it needs a site plan.
Uh huh.
Right, 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 right now, far from the uh aerial image that Mr. McNamara overlaid where he conducted some studies, you have nothing that shows where work has taken place. That's that's item number one. Item number two is an engineer's report to address flooding concerns, the flood storage capacity for persons upstream and downstream, whether this has an effect on either, and if not, the percentage of why. Third is a um a embellished, revised, whatever term you want to use, a report from a soil scientist. So make sure that they are encapsulating everything that the applicant has done, A, without a permit to this point, and B, everything that is in the complaint that was initially submitted to prompt this matter in the first place.
So we have none of those things.
That's that's.
And what's proposed to be to contend.
That's that's correct.
Correct.
That's correct. Right.
The job.
Right.
So.
We have none of that.
So then on January twenty second, they're supposed to come with, well, in advance, provide all of those materials in advance to be reviewed at the January twenty second.
Yeah. By myself, by myself and our engineer, whoever that may be, for the for the time being, that is Todd Ritchie of SLR and National Corporation. Um, should that position be filled here in this office, it would obviously go to them, but either way, it's getting reviewed by an engineer, it's getting reviewed by myself, with a chance for us to be able to say whether or not those comments have been sufficiently addressed or not. And then give them a chance to respond to those comments as needed. Now, obviously, they need to be put in the Google Drive, so that way you guys can have ample time to review this over the weekend before that Monday meeting. So in other words, you're not getting those the day of the meeting. Those those are in advance. So that way, we we have time.
So we can review them.
That's correct.
Are you in this guy's ear, Mr. Gorgon?
He has, he has, he has come to me um at least once since that last meeting, and he's been on the phone with me.
That's good.
I I I have emphasized to him, the ball is in his court to get these items. I it's, there there is no modus on staff or anyone else to go out there and do this research. It is his property, it is activities that he has conducted thus far without a permit. The onus is on him to get what you need. And if I, if he doesn't understand that now, then that's no, that, well, then, then, well, you're right. And and there is, there lies the problem for Mr. Marcus getting involved.
So my my frustration, I think, is is clear with the lack of follow-through and production of requested materials and what feels like stalling, although I'm not sure that that's the intent, it certainly comes across that way.
It must be really expensive, right, to get all the stuff together?
I I I don't want to get into the financial aspect of of this.
As a matter of fact.
Well, it it, for the applicant, yes.
Yeah.
For the commission, not necessarily.
Yeah.
For for the applicant, yeah, it's, there's, there is a cost associated with coming up with those items. But but they have retained an attorney. So they have someone else, they they have some monies available to to go forth with getting the materials they need. How how much?
So we're hopeful.
Well, they already think that one piece they're working on, that they have the soil scientist already, they're working on that piece, you know?
Be an engineer for it, it's our way.
I
I think we have a public comment section at the end of the meeting.
Well, no, 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 this this.
I'm a party though.
Yes, he is.
I'm a party.
Yeah.
I'm I don't want to interrupt.
No, 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 so go go ahead.
Well, do I have to state my name like?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so Brian Blatchek, Oral Hall, Hill Road. Um, I just, so but extension is for sixty five days, correct? Is that?
It is up to.
Is that automatic?
It is up to.
So will that, so can that be stipulated, that, so if you stipulate he has to have the stuff by the next regular meeting?
No.
Is that?
The.
Extension is granted from the twenty seventh, which is when the review date is over?
The ex, the extension is granted for the least period of time that is needed as practicable. So in other words, however many days needs to get it, that that heat of of extension time that needs to be used to get us to the January twenty second meeting, that's all we're using.
Okay, but so the way it's written, though, he's granting you the extension. It, so.
He is, he is consenting to granting the commission an extension.
Yeah, so who's entitled the, to the extension? You guys or him? Who who is the extension for? I understand it's for both parties, but in essence, who is it for?
It's it's for the commission.
Okay.
Be because the the commission, they, for for the review period, for the review process they chose, they have a standard period of sixty five days to review an application. That clock began when they accepted this application during the meeting on October twenty third.
But, yeah.
So 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 sixty five days from that date brings you to December twenty seventh. Now, we are not having, the commission is not having a meeting on December twenty seventh. This effectively is the last regular meeting
Understood.
before that deadline.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah.
So the applicant is is granting an extension to whenever the next regular meeting is
Yeah.
to 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 give them the time that they need to to prepare these materials.
Yeah, yeah. I was, the reason I'm asking is because you guys said that there was no initial deadline for him to submit any of this, and I was under the impression that there was, that's why you had accepted the incomplete application before the November meeting, was it, or was it the October meeting? You had let him hand in his incomplete application so that he met a deadline. That was written on an ordered to correct or something.
Right, right.
Right, so I was just confused when Melanie asked if there was a deadline, and you said there was not. I was under the impression there was.
Yeah, no, we're we're getting, you're getting two things, you're getting different things.
There was a deadline for him to submit an application.
Right, so there would, so the revised order to correct had a deadline for Mr. Gorgon to submit an application.
Okay.
There is no deadline for that revised order to correct for, in the instance that this application is withdrawn or it is denied for the property to revert back to the conditions that existed as of when he bought the property on November fourth, twenty thirteen. Now, it's it's being discussed by the commission that that be a stipulation as part of, you know, agreeing to this extension, that if, you know, the commission hears this, or if if this hearing is, or this review is continued, then the applicant either have all the materials needed for that January twenty second meeting, or they have a plan.
Yeah, but yeah, listen, whatever you guys come up with, that's fine. I I just wanted to clarify that. I you can fill me in when I speak to you.
Okay, okay. Very good.
So the things that I've heard Attorney O'Brien say that, I believe that I, I tried to write down quickly, were uh that that resonated with me, were that we should make sure that the cease and desist is being upheld, and I'm not clear on how we do that, but I the date knows.
That date, that's that's me. Any, any, any time that I get it, or if if there is someone that notices that work is being done out there, they call me, and I go out there and I say, Mark, you're violating the cease and desist order. Wh- what are you doing? I I've already had to go out there once to do that, and I re- I reiterated to him, this is a cease and desist order. It is for you to cease work, period end. You're you're not doing anything until the commission renders a decision.
Is there any reason to believe that that is a continuing issue?
Well, he has.
I don't know what the definition of work is. I mean, if there's anything going on, I'll make him aware of this.
Okay. I don't know whether we need to write that in, is what I was getting at, as you recommended, but that was one thing, and another was that I I'm, I'd be a big fan of the immediate refiling, should they withdraw. And if I'm unders, right, and if I'm understanding, on the January twenty second meeting, we we plan to review all of the materials, provided that they come with them and render a decision that night?
Um.
Because otherwise, we'd have to continue to.
I I suppose, I suppose, oh, hang on here. Well, within the draft resolution of approval, wouldn't.
February twenty sixth, we're gonna need, or we can call a special meeting.
No. Hang on here, let's, we're going to, we're going to. Oh.
Deny it.
Not good with using this website.
That's the biggest thing that I want to make sure we're covering, that if it's denied, there is teeth in it to which it returns. Because I personally.
But I still think that even if we're gonna restore it, I think Nico would agree, because that was a part of the conference that we're having last week. But there needs to be an engineer involved in the restoration to make sure that it goes back appropriately and safely.
So.
Again, let's do, like, start pulling that, the bad way that he's.
It's gonna be a problem.
Yeah.
Right.
Been honored. No, I I agree with that. I just want to make sure that the teeth involved with the restoration is needed as well.
Okay. So between now and January twenty second, that's forty two days. So sixty five minus forty two is twenty three. So you would have twenty three days left of extension time, if if the commissioner was not comfortable rendering a decision that night. Or for some reason, there was more time that was needed, you could continue to a special meeting.
Okay. And remember, we can, if needed, we can approve based on stipulations, and you would be able to write, write those stipulat.
Yeah.
Would we have a draft resolution of approval in front of us, but we can.
You would not.
You can do that live.
But but, yes, if, yeah, if the commission was willing to put in the time to to go through that, that most certainly could be an.
Yeah, yeah. But that that way, if it's denied, it's part of that process as well.
Want to make a motion, or you want to add to the discussion?
Can I make a motion?
What would you need a motion for?
Through, grant this extension.
It's, you don't need to grant it, it's already been given to you.
We don't grant it, it's granting.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah. For an extension, we don't make money.
It's not.
You're asking him for a request, he can tell you no.
Exactly.
We have a timeline, but, so he's granting us.
We're accepting this, so that, but essentially so that we can they can get more of the information that we need.
Yeah. Yes. Right.
Alright.
Well, in all honesty, it almost makes sense, because we don't have anything to deny is the problem too.
Well, if we deny it, we don't have any key to make them restore it.
Exactly. It's in our best interest, yeah.
So.
Well, you have the revised order to correct, there's just no, there's no timeline.
I'm just not, does the, I don't recall the revised order to correct, does that have stipulations in it that we have an engineer involved and the and the site plan involved, all the things? Either way, something has to happen here. So, and we need all those experts to weigh in on either, are we move, is he moving forward with his plan, or is he? Are we move, is he moving forward with his plan, or is he reversing the plan, but either way.
Well, the the idea, the idea with with reversing the plan would be. You know, you, we, the, there are photographs that are submitted for the record that show what the conditions of the property were. Roughly in the time period that Mr. Gorkan bought it. So so you, so you have a a a time capsule that's that gives an idea for what that property looked like. You know, that 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 you would want the property to revert back to.
Because I just don't have full faith. That that's an easy ask. To restore it back to the way it was without some oversight, because the amount of work that has been done there has substantially changed the riverbanks, the the river itself. Um. And it's. I don't know, am I being clear?
You you are.
It is, but how, well, I don't know if we can enforce that, though.
So so.
I just don't want, I I I I would hate to, no matter how we land on this, have the property end up in a worse condition.
I agree.
For everyone involved.
So 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 i- if if you were concerned from that aspect. You 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 could address that by saying, okay, if if you're asking for some oversight, the app, the property owner could come back. And, you know. Um, be directed to to go through an agent approval process. Where you have me involved to to give oversight for how that remediation process takes place. Um, so so in other words, he's not just doing it by himself. And we're under the premise that everything's gonna go back to the way it was, there 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 would be some oversight with that process.
Is that something we need to write in, or that's just an assumption?
It 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 would, it would be an assumption, a- and and I would be the one, I I would, the onus for following that through would be on me. Because e- essentially, if if the commission either is unable to. Render a favorable decision for this application, or if or if it gets withdrawn. And if for some reason there's no timeline for a new application to be submitted, then, yeah, then then there's the prompt to say, okay. So what's happening? And then that's that's where your stipulations come in, where um you have. Um, my myself, you know, essentially say, okay, you you need to give us an agent approval application. For the remediation that's that's taking place out there. And essentially have me go through it with you so that we're not just doing this by yourself.
So as someone who has far more experience with these matters than I do, is it reasonable to ask them to come to that January twenty second meeting with a plan to remediate? Should this be denied?
No. Hmm, no, because because there are, because they are applying to keep things the way they are. They're they're not, they're not applying to revert things back to the way they were.
But if we deny it, then we need a remediation plan, so how do we enforce that? If if.
Well, that's, well, that's, that's what they're, that could be revised. That's the next step, and that's what the revised order to correct is a prompt for. The revised order to correct says you either submit an application. To have what you've done thus far on your property be approved, or you revert the property back to the way it was, as of when you bought it.
Do they need a permit and approval to revert it?
It they they, that's that's where the administrative process is coming.
You will recite, you see it, okay. So it doesn't require us to sign off on the remediation?
Well. Be- because you're you're you're.
Still in the wetlands.
Well, it it is, um, but you're asking someone to. Um. Deescalate the use of that property, not so much as continued its. You you're you're having something being removed or or reverted back to a way of what, so you're not, you're not. I don't, I can see where your concern for impacts would for the water course would would be. Um. And 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 if the commission wasn't comfortable with me proceeding administratively on that, you know, that that would be something that you could.
I don't feel that way, I just.
I think that the question, and and please tell me wrong, I I I one hundred percent trust from the administrative perspective, the question is is. We can tell them. That it needs to be reverted. We can tell them, let's say we can even tell them a timeline in which it needs to be reverted. However, what are the penalties associated with not doing the work within the timeline? Asked, not from you, but like what kind of teeth would be behind the remediation? Because what I wanted to get is or keep at base, them just foregoing it. Then because.
Right, that.
And that's that's where it is, because something without any kind of like. You know, see, they're both behind it, it just be easily.
That's that's for the legal elements to this requirement of life.
And then then it would just fall into like a legal realm, and then there could be kind, there could be.
The town would have to pursue that, that would come down to.
Yeah, the town would have to do.
If it got to the point where the rules are being violated, then you have to go to a different level.
Right, I mean, it's.
Okay, and but it it can escalate in that direction if needed.
That's correct.
Okay. That's, that actually makes me much more, I just wanted to make sure that there was a pathway towards escalation.
So. So Dave, to get back to what I was trying to get at, it's not that I think you know that I have confidence, you know, that's not really what I was getting at, but so so. Take this question as gently as I am trying to offer it.
Right.
Do you feel, after having walked the site and seen the site and had been up to your eyeballs in this? From the time I came to your desk, excuse me, do you feel confident that you can oversee the remediation and the restoration of this should the application get denied? Without the oversight of an engineer or someone who can look at this from that perspective? I'm worried about the structural integrity of the banks.
Right. I I I mean, the the idea would be that. All of those improvements would be removed. So no- nothing would remain. The 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 whatever conditions were in that or are in the photographs. But that roughly correlate to when Mr. Yorkan bought the property, that's what it's going back to.
And so I I guess.
So 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 all of the rocks.
Yeah.
All the m- material, the bridge, all that would be taken out.
Absolutely.
None of that would remain.
But the. According to the. Complaints, the the person who brought the complaint, Mr. Blanchett.
Right.
Before it's in the first place, the river has shifted.
Right.
And in order to shift it back, it's to where it was before. Those banks on Mr.'s side have already been impacted, and if he has to excavate. Back to where it was, there's buildings there.
I agree with you.
Meaning has damage been done that even after he removes what he removes what he did as part of his process?
Would destabilize those banks because he's not an expert and he's not.
Yeah.
A builder. I mean, I guess it's not technically our problem maybe, but I feel like it is our responsibility, I don't know. Am I off here?
Yeah, no, it that's, that's that's a good point, I I I I will say. Those those structures, they are, they are noted on a survey that dates back to. Nineteen seventy one. They have been there.
They're older than me.
They have, they have been there a while.
Yeah.
It 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 stands to reason that they were there long before this work began.
Sure.
The buildings?
Yes.
Well, I know what, if we, hopefully, we have an internal engineer, we have a federal engineer at that point. They would be able to assist and weigh in administratively, I'm assuming, like, if you had any concerns, you can always.
Correct.
This town engineer.
Of course.
The town engineer can assist with.
Of course.
With his his agency.
I I don't wanna overstep, if it's falling on your shoulders, do you feel comfortable with this falling on your shoulders?
If 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 I was not, then I would, then I would, I would, I would bring this essentially back to you guys.
Okay.
Cause I I I have the discretion to take something about myself. I just have the discretion to say, hey, this is, this is too big for me, I I I can't, I can't do this by myself, I I I need to go to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not an engineer, I.
Right.
No, but we can call them in at least, if we need to, you know?
I I.
Okay.
I I don't see a way where. You guys aren't involved. A- as as you're you're you're, as the first. Process, like, I I, um. How do I say this? I I think it's it's in your benefits to give the applicant every or the property owner every opportunity to. Go through this with you guys and and try to get it right this time around. Um.
I agree with that, basically, I could just. It could also.
Just 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 because the the nature of the work that it's that has taken place itself is is so substantive. Um, yes, there there, with me, you can, you can have some things. You you can have me approve some things to revert, that's the way it was, but if there are questions that arise, I've been interviewed at the building or anything else of that nature, like. Yes, I have an engineer, but I also may ultimately say, li- listen. I I don't see how this couldn't go back to the commission for a future crisis review. It it would be difficult to go through this process again, but hopefully, if we got to that point, we would know a lot more then than we do now.
Right, we might have more information to go on in that.
Right, right.
We might actually have some information, you're all, it's all hearsay.
Yes.
Um. Marjorie, what was your first name?
Melanie.
Melanie, sorry. Um. Are we covered from a legal standpoint if? So it it seems like we're talking a lot of, um. And what ifs, or, um. I think that's hypothetical, thank you, I I think, first, right to that, I. We'll figure this out later, but I think we're going in the wrong direction of looking back and talking a lot about the.
Mediation.
Remediation or restoration of pre-existing site. I don't think we're taking into account the probable fact. That it it needed, the bank probably needed to be shored up. If I live on a river. Um, you know. A- A- there's something to be said for one of our, one of our. Codes, one of our regulations, which says that you are permitted as a right to. The regular maintenance and use of residential property, of course, you're not permitted to. Add or, you know, the deposition or removal of significant amounts of material. If I'm all.
This is what I was getting at, I feel like if that were my property, I would have wanted to put in a retaining wall or something to shore up that bank, and you need permits to do those things, and you need someone to weigh in.
So that was.
You need an expert to weigh in on the construction, you can't just build a retaining wall.
We need that, we should have that. Um, but I think it would be a mistake to go back and like erase the bank, I feel like we would be opening ourselves up potentially, my question for you, Melanie. If, you know, we do something like that, like, I don't wanna be responsible for the guy's building falling into the river. Because he was, he, I'm assuming the best, I mean, he's doing the best for the property and the site. We're gonna need to prove for that, we're looking for engineers.
Right.
That would be nice. I think we should be focusing more on going forward now that the site changes have been made. Are you looking out for him or me? I'm talking about both property owners, whoever owns property on the opposite side of the, on the east side and the west side. He owns the west. Like, that if there has been a change made to the flow of the river or flood source capacity of the river, we address that change, we recognize what it is. And we do finish the necessary work on the opposite bank potentially to also shore that up. See, I like, that's where I'm at with this, like, I see it as as an improvement. And improvements generally mean that. Could mean or that it's. A good thing, I mean, I was there, we walked the site, I am a landscaper and a. And a mason, and like a, you know, not a professional mason, but the work that he did there. It's pretty sound, you know, it's sound.
Dude, he moved.
Rock, rock work. Well, okay, so maybe I can't say it, so. You know. All right. Whatever, that's where I'm at with it, I would have us just finish the job and finish it on both of the opposite side as well. To shore up the bank, to to shore up the bank there, or maybe find some compromise, if too much material was placed, okay, move a couple of rock, move whatever has to be moved. But like, keep the banks su- sure, you know, because that's your guys' property now, unless. They've been, you know, they've been.
We'll we'll figure it out.
But as far as remediation goes, like, I don't wanna make make sure that we don't open ourselves up to. You know, oh, just on principle, we wanted to go back to the way it was, but like, rivers are fluid things, they move, floodplains move, they shift. Tree roots, trees hold them up naturally and stones sometimes.
Right.
And they move, and this, the fact of living next to a river, that's why I just had to talk to Mr. Blanchett about it, a property, like, what's it like living next to a, an open water course?
Any decision that you guys make cannot deny a person the right to use their property. So so if 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 for some reason, you were to deny this application. If 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 it were found, or i- if if there was evidence to suggest that by denying this application. Um. I- it's it's somehow going to impair that garage's ability to maintain a structural integrity, then. I I obviously that there's gonna have to be something to to address that.
But we need the engineers, I just, I was just thinking that it's move, we should move forward and do what's best for the existing site now, and for both property.
Well, I think certainly, depending on having his property restored to the way it was before, because he didn't agree to these changes in the first.
You wanna set an example that it's easier to uh beg for forgiveness, which is basically what you guys are showing this guy by accepting the incomplete application to begin with.
Well, how much, how much? That wasn't our intention, but I.
How much land, I mean, did you lose land, like actively, and how much? As well. Well. We're talking about restoring. Well, uh, we've had this conversation, I mean, uh, this is a moot point, he's not here to, this, it's not, this isn't constructive. Well, I I'm speaking like candidly and truthfully about what I saw on the site, and I also saw retaining walls along the riverbank on on your property, on your side of the street, and that, I don't know if you put them in, if they're previous home learned in. Historically, you know, that was there to maintain, to act as as a retaining wall. For the lawn and to keep the river where it is. And he's doing the same thing, so we just need to make it work from here, I think, that's all, all to say, going forward. And an engineer would help. Just to get the river stationary where it is.
Okay, so I feel differently, and I feel like if the river has shifted, then it needs to, then the remediation should include. Whatever is necessary in order to retain the original boundaries to whatever's extent is possible. Uh, cause I don't know what's possible because I'm not an expert in this, but if Mr. Blanchett's property was damaged or changed without his consent, then I feel like that needs to be fixed.
Well, that's why I asked, what what happened, did did you lose land?
Well, that was what his complaints.
Nico, to answer your question, I think the best way to answer your question is, um. If he had done, um, submitted an A two survey with his application, which is, you know, typically required, um, you would have the answer to that question. We would see them before. Well, you, first of all, you'd be able to delineate what is his property, what is not, um. We need that. I mean, if you look at the map that David has from nineteen seventy one, it shows the center of the river as the property boundary. So if that was established, um, you know, through a survey, then you guys would actually probably be able to get a gist of how far the river actually has moved or not, or. You know, but if you don't have all the information, then you can't. You can't start saying this looks good or that looks good, right, we have to get up. It's just like. Speaking of term, would you be amenable to having him fix, like shore up your side of the river as well? Well, he's gotta break something down and show a plan.
Well, no, well.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting, we're getting, we're spreading the carpet for the course. But you first need to understand what has, what has taken place to this point, and then what is being solved for us part of this application before you. Before you you get to any end results, you you don't, you don't have the information to begin with, to even assess. That. Or to even answer that question.
But we're still praying we're gonna get it on there. We're asking for the same stuff we've been asking since we started this.
What I'm gonna do, though, is in the verbiage. That you recommended, is allow us to have a little more. Behind. Our request.
If we, if we say that we're gonna. Uh, table this discussion until January twenty second's meeting, at which time we will review all of the requested materials and. Render a, just, well, I guess we we don't, do we announce that we're gonna render a decision at that time?
No, we would do that, but we would.
That we will table it and review, but our intention would be. Eh, that we, our intention would be that if we can render a decision that night, then we will.
Yeah, I mean. That's usually unintentional, so yes, I agree with that. I would just. Be very cautious that when we, if and when. We allow, allow the extension, take the extension, whatever the verbiage needs to be, consent. The extension that we put in the stipulation, that yet, well, that you wrote down. Because, yeah, that you recommended, that you wrote down, because that's the one big thing that I add, is that I'm kind of like, I'm along the lines of Mr. Blanchett, where it's just like. It's gone far too long, but I wanna make sure that we have. Some sort of ability of leasing our decisions, if you will.
Agreed.
And and right now, it's a, it's a little bit shady, the ability to lease our decisions, I wanna make sure that our decisions are more. Rock solid and solidified in text. Than just our conversations, because this guy's been kind of dragging us.
Not forthcoming.
Yeah, yeah, no, not at all, he's been dragging us around, and I feel taken, I feel like the situation has been vastly taken advantage of, which I don't like, but I also think that. We're in a position where we allowed him the upper hand due to our own. I don't want to see me collect, we could have done a little better job.
Noted, so.
Stipulation, but that's on me, that's on me, since I'm part of this commission too. So.
But here we are.
But here we are.
So how do we move forward productively from here? So we, we accept the extension or we request the accepted extend extension?
Well, you you are acknowledging that a consent, that an extension has been granted.
And and then how do we amend to that the stipulations that we spoke of?
So so what what I what I would advise the. What I would advise the commission to say is um. So so that the extension is acknowledged, that that we will continue this site plan review. To the meeting on Sept- on January twenty second, provided the following. One, all of the items that have been requested thus far in my report, Mr. Bjorken's report. Be addressed or have responses in advance of the regular meeting on January twenty second.
On or before?
January twenty second.
Do you want to wait for Melanie to step outside?
Um, no, because. Yeah. So so.
The Thursday before January twenty second.
Uh, the Thursday before January twenty second is January eighteenth.
So honor before January.
Honor before January eighteen.
Let's be real clear, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I want to be as clear as anything possible. I also want to make sure that we have the.
The speed of this is continuing.
It that well, that that's, well, that's, that's that's implied. Okay. Because that that season order doesn't go away until I I issue notice of resolution saying that it's offensively null for the record.
Right.
The second option or the second thing is um if the applicant is not able to satisfy. Um, or give satisfactory responses to all the comments. Then 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 they um they provide a response. That indicates, you know, their plans um to withdraw this application that is before you. And uh give a date for resubmission, so um.
Within.
Within however many, so within thirty days.
Is that reasonable?
And and it's up, it's up, it's up to you.
Well, I say, I say prior to the next meeting.
Which would be January or February twenty second.
Yes, February twenty sixth.
Yeah, fair, so whatever the Thursdays for that's five days for that, so before.
Okay, okay.
So we either have all of this stuff on January twenty second to review. Or by February twenty second, they gave us a remediation plan. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, they 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 give you a re-submitted application.
What is the, what is the determination can be made prior to your next regularly scheduled meeting in his letter meeting? The second paragraph, last sentence. What is that?
Uh he he's saying that they they will be able to determine whether or not they will have everything that they need. To submit before the next meeting on January twenty second. So so they, so they are essentially, this this is, this is a placeholder for them to give them more time to either. Get what they need or to decide to withdraw. And they and they will make the determination to either continue forth this application or withdraw before January twenty second.
Okay, but it doesn't change anything really, because we're, it's still the same issue at hand or?
I I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, if you're talking about reviewing their application, they're telling you that they are gonna most likely withdraw their application, right?
They will submit it by that or withdraw, and if they withdraw, there's a stipulation that says it needs to be remediated.
Okay, so by resubmitting it, then it's just another sixty five days.
If we accept.
If 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 the commission accepts the application.
I think that they're out of. That that's a personal opinion, that goes up for both, but in my mind, that's.
Well, we have legal, I believe, parameters for if we accept a new application, the time period in which. Right, we have to grant a certain amount of time or we can immediately.
Oh, I'm not. No, you you have to accept, you have to decide whether to, whether or not to accept an application for the next number of days of us receiving it.
After we've accepted it, we will first we choose whether it's going to be a site plan review or it's going to be a public.
Hearing, that's correct.
Right, and which whichever way we choose, there are uh time boundaries around that.
For a site plan review, you have sixty five days, for a public hearing, you have thirty five days to open, sixty five, uh you have sixty five days to open. Thirty five days to review and then thirty five days to render a decision.
So that's that's the outside of what we can utilize. Is there an inside boundary? Can we render a decision on it more quickly than that you can?
It's at, it's at the commission's discretion.
So when we, so if we accept on on February twenty sixth or whatever.
If you guys want.
We go, we can.
If you guys. Yeah, de- de- depending on which process you choose, if if it's a public hearing, there are obviously a notice that have to go out. And and there are some stipulations that you would have to adhere to statutorily, but theoretically, you guys can move faster than. Your regular meeting once a month schedule. Uh it's at your discretion. If you guys want to have a meeting. Two weeks after your next regular meeting, that's that's at your discretion.
And and also, I don't know if this is applicable or not, but we're looking at January and February here. And I don't know how much work it's even feasible to get done in a riverbed in January and February in Connecticut. Everything could be frozen over under six inches of snow.
If it's remediation, it probably wouldn't be able to stay placed till spring anyways, I I wouldn't expect if you have to pay somebody, uh if you had to pay somebody. Outside of the the homeowner, they have to bring anybody in. I don't know that many people that will do that kind of work.
And it and it might not be a good time if you're.
It's not a good time of work because you also know water flow change, like it it might not be safe for the river. It might not be smart to do that kind of work in the river at that time, while damaging the river itself.
Okay, but we're not, that that's a later thing, because that's a completion after we accept the.
Yeah.
Right, uh 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 assuming that the applicant withdraws and gives you a a. You know, and and gives you the intent that they will resubmit an application.
Just to set expectations for the timelines of when we might even begin to have remediation done on this site.
Because I'm getting a little.
I know.
Frustrated with this gentleman. No, I I I want, I want to just know that. I'm sorry.
What's the benefit for him, for them to re-withdraw and resubmit the application?
It 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 gives, it gives, it gives them more time.
But that doesn't.
No, it's mine, it's true, it wasn't, it's gonna be through the winter, as long as we're thorough and get this something going, it's fine.
That's what we're trying to do, is make sure that we've got everybody's. Okay, all right, so what do we?
He's obviously not on our good graces.
Okay, so so I I would suggest that the commission, well, ob- obviously you guys have acknowledged the extension. And that and that you say for the record that this site plan review will continue on January twenty second, twenty twenty four, seven o'clock P M meeting of day. Um, and that and that you have that with the stipulations that we've mentioned, the first of being, first of which being. All the requested materials to this date must be submitted on or before January eighteenth. If you are, if the applicant is not able to submit in time for that deadline. They give us a plan to withdraw the current application and resubmit a new one on or before February twenty sixth. If they're not able to submit a new application, they give us a plan for remediation. For the property to revert it back to the conditions that it was, yes.
Comfortable with this.
I'm I'm very comfortable with that, so. That gives us. Do you, do you see any issues with? Those stipulations.
My thesis is timeline, by the way.
I I guess we've been a a engineered approved remediation plan. Better maybe language.
Okay.
I think if you're looking for someone to tell you it's the right way to do that. Um, whether he goes on and you put a fat or goes back, I just think you wanna.
Yep.
Not tell somebody to go off and fix it and they.
That's my concern, thank you.
Okay.
And a timeline for the. Remediation.
Yep.
And or it's planned, that that's the big thing, like I don't want to say, yeah, I'll fix it. And sit on it.
Yep.
Like, and I know that it can escalate through, but if we can do something to avoid that escalation, I prefer. Because like, I mean, obviously the neighbors have been through it now, he's been through it up like.
Right.
And then it'll, I don't want it to be a continual conversation here either.
And it's a plan for remediation that we don't like, but a timeline that we don't like and we deny it. And we still don't have any teeth, do we?
Um, you.
We can approve it with stipulations and adjust the.
Well, you 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 have the cease and desist order that says he has to revert the problem back to the way it was.
Right.
That that still remains in effect. That cease, that cease and order doesn't go away. No matter what happens, until I issue notice of resolution saying that whichever way this is resolved, it has been resolved. To the A, to the weather's commission satisfaction and to the in the weather's agent satisfaction.
That makes me feel bad.
If you deny it now, they can't withdraw the application though. So that's the only way to prevent them from not getting another.
Right, but.
They're buying themselves four months.
Well, realistically, from a weather in Connecticut standpoint.
No, I know. But realistically, realistically, there isn't really even an application to withdraw because it's.
And I'm not arguing that point with you. We're waiting on those and we're trying to get those materials so that we can make an educated, informed, appropriate decision that serves the best interest of everybody.
Because because you don't want the applicant coming back and appealing the decision that you guys make.
Yeah.
And then saying, oh, you know, they they didn't give me the time, I I I consented. For them granting an extension, I said I was going to do my due diligence to give you the items that they need. Now that they've said that. Now, now if you want to deny it, you can say, look, you gave us this letter that said that you were gonna do this stuff.
Yep.
And and you considered to grant us extension to get us this time and you didn't do it.
Yep.
So you issue another set of, uh you issue another report, I do another report or whatever.
Well, no, 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 you 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 wouldn't need to, that that would not need to be done because those could be incorporated, those could be incorporated into the new.
So save the time.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
By giving us something, they're also giving us. Right now, we only have something to deny.
With a new application.
I just spent all the stuff you laid out for them already, as long as it's understood that that be part of the new application.
Yeah, for 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 a new application, we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. You you would be able to incorporate the photographs from the sidewalks. Those the the enforcement.
Yeah, if he gets help from his attorney that he has experience in this, then we'll all.
Right. Right. So.
I feel much better now.
Okay.
Much better now.
So. So I have a directive now.
Thank you.
I would write this letter on your guys' behalf. Do you guys have any other questions?
I I wasn't sure if you finished what you wanted to say, you were commenting on.
No, uh no, I think I'm, I think I will say, I think it's. Um, I think that we just, in terms of just wanting to be, get it right, right? That's that's all I was.
That would be my top priority, right, right, right?
And that we, you know, if there's a way, if there's a path to do that without litigation and. Uh then if we can do it that way, that might be to everybody's advantage.
Agreed, okay, I'm so glad to hear it.
Yeah.
I tried to do it that way first to say, no, I asked them not to do this, but this is a last resort for me.
Yep.
It's not, I don't want to be here, so.
Well, yeah.
I asked, it's not like I.
So I was safe for the record that I love.
Safe for the record that this review is continued until our next regular scheduled meeting on January twenty seventh.
Okay, twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four.
Okay.
Thanks for, thanks for coming.
Can I request that we take a.
Yeah. I'm holding us in recess for three minutes.
Can someone take a motion?
Motion to discuss for.
Five minutes. Second. All right, favor.
Okay.
Okay.
We're still here.
Record.
So calling the meeting back to order.
At nine eleven P M.
At nine eleven P M on this fine Monday evening. All right, so next order of business in our business.
Yes, I would advise you go back to that draft resolution approval, which I need to do right now.
Do you have that?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I read the TV screen or read the.
Scroll as well for the benefit of those that are not here or otherwise ones who watch this.
You're gonna sing because Pat's not here.
And that just does like commission like I was.
Good stuff. You're welcome. Okay, share. Let's make sure this is zoomed in a little bit more. If you can read it.
I've done it a few times, I don't remember zero percent of it.
Okay, Star Wars scroll begin. Oh. I'm already catching one correction I need to make.
You catch.
You guys don't worry about it, you just keep reading. Okay. Excuse the film. No. So. Has everybody read it? All right, first correction that we are going to make, you guys will follow me on the screen. It was Danielle. Okay, second correction that I'm going to make is back up here at the top. This was not prepared by Mr. Trinkus, this was prepared by Douglas De Vesta. Of. De Vesta Civil Engineering.
I should have.
That's okay. Now they'll see these plans were dated October twelfth. With the October, with the revision date of November sixteenth, at least I got that part right, okay. The next thing we're going to go into is your conditions. Uh, you guys have something from the professional wetland scientists, uh this condition is going to go away. Hey.
I was curious if you had believed that or not, given that we already received it.
Um, this condition with the fact thing. Um, you, that could be crafted to say. Fire to the. Issuance of a zoning permit. Um. The property owner. The woods, wetlands agents. Mister Nicholas Jordan and Mister. On together shall. Conduct a sidewalk, a property to identify. Trees to be cleared and those to remain. Within. Within the, um. Within the.
Um, it's a disturb.
Proposed limits, uh, stir. Okay.
Can't see right, you're up there. You were, yeah. No.
Um. Then you have the NDB condition here, number nine. The rest of the conditions are pretty, four other plates, nothing new there. And all of the stuff that's on the previous pages are all the materials that the commission has considered. Part of this application for the record. Are there any questions?
No, I think we did a good job on this stuff to be honest. Like being.
I'm comfortable with this.
I'm comfortable with this.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
And Laura is.
I appreciate you calling, by the way.
Uh, well.
I appreciate you going as well.
Oh, yes.
So so Laura is still here. I I I would advise the commission that.
Hi folks, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but uh, I haven't been able to hear anything in the audience since you came back from the recess and I've tried to do it through my phone and same similar.
Dave, you're muted or your video.
Wonder if your mic might be off.
No, uh, our microphone is on.
Your camera, your video.
Laura, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Still Rodrigo, nothing? He's done.
I maybe log off and then come back.
You've said. No, I I I can't. We do not have a chat.
I just told, he understood. I he nodded. He's gonna log off.
Okay, but Laura, you can hear us, right?
Yeah, I can.
Nice.
Okay. Okay.
That was my sign language.
He's good. Okay.
Can you hear us now, Mister Pinta? No.
No, so so, uh. I I I don't know how, I don't know how to say to Mister.
We could put a document on the screen and share it.
Okay. Uh.
You know, I'm so glad you're here, cause usually I'm that guy at work. And my brain just like starts slowing down at this hour and you're still like clicking right on it, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Just bear with me. Mister. Rodrigo. Working at a. You appear to have joins. In meeting twice. Can you exit both? Um.
It's with his phone, probably.
And really enter. You may also. Have joined by computer.
Can you kick him? Can you dump him out?
I'm I'm going to, um. I don't know how to do this.
What about those three dots on the bottom, right?
Nope, he's out.
Well, I I I put him in the way. Laura, you can still hear us, correct?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Do we hold this until you return?
No, it it's you guys, you guys can continue your business. I I'm trying to help him in to get back in the meeting. The audio is still working, so that's not an issue. A participant has.
Unable to close captioning. Oh.
Oh, okay.
I see you live stream those captioning. I've done talk to text before. That makes me very nervous.
Okay.
Okay.
So so you 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 guys were on discussion for this for this application.
I think we were all settled. Laura, unless you had anything that you wanted to, oh, you were saying she wasn't a.
So 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 I would, I would advise the commission that because Laura was not. Part of the review for this application and she stated for the record that she was not able to review. The other bit, the application materials, excuse me. That she abstained in this application. So it would just be the three of you deciding on this application.
Okay. I need help.
Okay, what are your questions?
Nope, I'm good on all of this.
Okay.
Do I make a motion that we approve?
Uh. I'm sorry.
No worries.
Okay. Mister. Uh. My, his his microphone is off.
I got it now. Uh, it's working again.
Awesome, awesome. I can hear you fine.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, of course. Okay, so so I would advise Madam Chair. Is that if if this commission is looking to approve this application. That you make a motion to approve an application for regulated activities. Based on the conditions one through.
Nine?
One through. Nine, correct. Um, based on reasons one through three as written in a draft resolution of approval.
Alright, here we go.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the application for Fort Jennifer's Way.
Yep.
Based on reg- uh, the regulated activities proposed for Fort Jennifer's Way.
Yep.
Based on conditions one through nine. And based on regulations one through three.
Reasons.
As reasons one through three, thank you, as written in the draft resolution, resolution. Of approval.
I second. Kill it.
Okay.
Motion on the floor.
Second by Kevin.
Yeah, by me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, abstain. And.
Should I?
You've also, Laura abstains, Nico or.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay.
So 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 we have two in favor.
Yeah.
We have one abstention and.
Decline? What is that one again? Uh, oppose, oppose.
So so the motion does not pass.
Two, four, one, oh.
No, the motion does not pass.
How's that work?
The, um.
We need at least three.
For 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 this motion to pass because you only have three members that are voting. You need all three members to vote in favor.
So where does that leave us?
Um. I I. It 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 puts staff in the position of of going back to the applicant to request an extension. I I don't know if 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 the applicant's going to grant it. I I I think they would have to. They have no choice. But then it puts the onus on the commission to say when. You you would have a a a special meeting or another meeting to to hear this.
Yep.
So from a procedural standpoint, we're already in the voting phase and we already voted, so.
No, 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 no. So so so, no, so.
Okay.
So the the vote fails or 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 the motion does not pass because you did not have enough votes to pass it.
Yep.
You want to show cause?
Well, I I I I would.
You wanna re-vote?
Well, it's 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 up to the commission. It's.
Well, I don't want you to sway because you feel, no, that's that's unfair. You shouldn't have to sway just because you feel like you're under pressure. That's, that is not valid. That's not the point of this.
Well.
Um, I guess that the question would be.
I don't know if we have any further discussion.
Well, no, no, you 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 can, you can. It it's because.
Reading through the considerations for decision.
Okay.
Regulations.
Okay.
Is.
I mean, basically, I feel like that the. But it will be just too detrimental to the wetlands there.
Well. What what is, what is your, what is your substantive evidence that you are basing that on?
The lack of, well. The lack of information, basically.
Uh, on which portions? For which portions do you have a lack of information that's allowing you to render a positive decision? Cause if we do get rented an extension, we're gonna need to request that information be provided by them and they need to be given a. A a a reasonable. You you know. Request to adhere to from us.
Right.
In order to build, say, we're already approved to build on the property, so they need to adhere to regulations that we put forward to them, so. If we tell them no, we can tell them no. We gotta tell them why and give them an opportunity to.
But they were approved as a building lot is approved by whom? By claims, aren't they?
No, by by the End of Wetlands Commission. This had to go before the End of Wetlands Commission for subdivision. When this, when this, when the lot from Sunset Hill Road was subdivided, it had to go before the Wetlands Commission to show that that, that this. That that configuration could hypothetically support a structure and be and be considered as a building law. It it wasn't, it wasn't specific to 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 say, oh, this is where the buildings go and this is how big it's gonna be. This is the driveway, septic system, so on and so forth, but it was. It was hypothetical, so the lot could be subdivided. Now, this application was for specific activities on this lot. For the bona fide construction of a house, for a driveway, for a septic system, for the garage or barn, whatever they want to call it. That's, that's what you are rendering a decision on today. Based, based on the the, you know, the the approvals that have been granted thus far, that 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 say, you know, this. This law went before the Wetlands Commission as part of a subdivision application. Um, it it was reviewed by them. It was, it was, there was a resolution of approval with. Conditions at that time, I'm assuming some of which revolved around. Um, perhaps the more pertinent activity for this lot, which was them constructing that culvert. To get the driveway to that portion of the upland review area in the first place. Um, and now we're here.
Yeah.
So which, so at the end of the discussion that we had in the meeting tonight. I asked you if you had, if they had answered all of your questions.
I said no.
And then I asked you which questions have they not yet answered to your satisfaction?
So I guess that that's more, I agree, yeah. So and it's okay, it's okay. The 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 no was fine.
Slight wording is one of them.
So you gave me that list, but we had con, we had discussions about all of those pieces. I'm questioning whether you didn't get the information or you didn't like the information that you got, those being different.
They didn't really give any information. They were just like, oh, it's gonna be, you know, in response to Dave's comment for. Or. For lighting locations, types of lighting locations and in response to the comment about, um. Which trees are gonna remain. Um.
So we put a condition in regarding which trees are going to remain.
So maybe. But it's not.
Uh, uh.
It is up here, absolutely.
Bring it up.
Yeah, oh, it's not here.
Maybe.
About the, um.
Yeah.
So so I'll go back to the conditions again.
Specifically with your name and uh, and Don's name.
I just feel like we have nothing else to go on, but like their word kind of.
That's always the case with every application.
That they're. But you guys are the ones that are so concerned about like teeth and and like. Enforcability.
Well, true, something, yeah, I absolutely.
What do you feel they're not going to follow through on here? What do you feel doesn't have teeth?
I mean, just the fact of building a residential lot in such. Such an important like upland review area, uh, like river buffer zone that the most of this lot, you know, falls on your.
I understand that.
Even and it was approved by a wetlands commission as a buildable lot.
Right.
And the septic system, the health department signed off that the septic system is safe.
And that's where you have to. Or we would like you to substantively provide, cause we're, we're gonna be at odds with this applicant. And it's, I can appreciate that a person might not like the idea of building this close to this. This protected area. I can appreciate that this might not taste good or feel good to build this way.
And there's the endangered species now.
There are. But but they are bound legally to follow through on all those DEP, DEP?
DEP.
DEP regulations and recommendations that are outlined there. They have to do that. And that's, I don't think that's on us to. We have to assume they're going to do that and it's the DEP's job to regulate if they're not, right?
And you're gonna assume that the that the that the construction guy who owns his own construction company is not gonna have heavy equipment on site.
So if he.
That's that's. That's regulated.
Yeah.
That's mine for.
Yeah, that's him. That that's got teeth. Like.
If if.
We have to assume that they're not gonna put like daylight lights outside on their porches that.
So so I.
Yeah, right, like that the bats are not gonna bother the bats or like affect the insect populations. We have to assume that they're not gonna use pesticides. Which is gonna affect and kill the endangered species on the site.
Right. Well, so.
We have to assume at least. I was until maybe maybe going on this walk with you, which had yet happened. To and to figure out what trees are gonna stay, you know, huge concerns about the bank getting eroded, cause the way the river.
Right, so well, but but but.
They are clearing all the way up to the riverbank.
No, they are.
Not to the river, not to the water. But to the flood plain where the where the where the where the land goes descends down to the river, which is basically the erodible like flood plain. Embankment of the river. They're clearing up until.
The scope for the regulated ra- regulated activities is for areas that are within the proposed limit of disturbance, nothing beyond that. And 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 it was said to the applicant that if they wanna clear or remove any trees beyond the. Limit of disturbance that they propose, that is a regulated activity. They have to come in for the End of Wetlands Resolution or get an A before. Or get an agent approval that's authorized by me to do that work.
I'm not saying they're gonna do that. I'm saying that the existing trees present on the site, based on our sidewalk and photographs, show that 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 they may not be of sufficient caliber. To hold the bank of the river and that protrusion that the 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 ge- the geography of the, of the anthropology of the site.
The so but.
I'm not comfortable with it.
So 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 what what tree specifically are are you talking, what or if I were to bring up the plans on the screen? What, um.
Say Jennifer. We didn't focus on the riverbank. They're not gonna have them. I took some pictures.
While while you do that.
Okay.
What kind of report could you be provided or data could you be provided that would help? Put you at ease for that one particular stipulation? Cause if I look, um, the way that I looked at it.
There's not. Yeah.
The way that I looked at it, just from somebody, I spent a lot of time in the woods. I don't have. I I spend a lot of time in wilderness and and on top of graphical maps. The way that it's operating here, though, due to the steep embankment, let's say that. There's not enough to support that embankment and the embankment does erode down. The level of that land is higher at that point, so I agree that if the land. Deteriorates, let's say it doesn't, let's go extremist and it's steep and it erodes, it doesn't hold the bank and the bank washes down into the river.
Okay.
River then goes around. That it will change.
There's.
What what I'm going to ask Mister George to do, if 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 you were human.
Somebody else approved it in the past, I don't know.
If 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 you can approach the screen. And show us where you are concerned about the situation taking place and then I will follow with my cursor.
Yeah.
So that we have some understanding of where.
Yeah.
So so the water course is.
Because Doug was very quick to interrupt and kind of say.
The water course is in this area.
The water course is here, which you pointed out.
Yeah.
This is a flags, the wetland flags are at the the water, I guess, here, or maybe just in.
Right, so 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 the water course is this line here.
Right.
And the and the wetlands flags, if I'm not mistaken, are this line here, the the dot, the two dotted.
Right, so basically the proposed limit of disturbance, and I visited the site recently and.
Is that squiggly line?
It's, there's, there's also it's.
It's it's the line that's dashed with the Xs.
Yeah, yeah.
That I'm following with my cursor.
Yep, that looks like a squiggly line to me because I'm.
So so.
I thought that the, that this, I thought that this was the added proposed limit of disturbance, this cloud line.
Right, right, that's that's correct. So I'm sorry, my my mistake. The squiggly line is the limit of disturbance.
And this is something of, what is this, something of trees? What is this, something of tree? And.
Limit of tree removal.
Silt fence is the X in the dash line.
That's correct.
And there's an existing silt fence in place all around the property from when they did construction previously. It's along, it actually matches up with a rough, broken stone wall. And I believe along here as well. This drops down dramatically to the brook. I understand that they're not gonna, they're gonna leave all these trees. That's good. He kept trying to guide me over there. My area of concern is this. On the right and the east side, David, your cursor's with me.
Okay.
Um, the way that the river comes in here, um, and then there's another inlet. There's a wetland that feeds in here as well. This is all flood plain here and then. I'm just concerned because this, when it drops off from the limit of disturbance, that's the, and they're gonna build lawn right up to that. That's the stone wall, that's the silt fence.
They 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 could.
And then there's some trees and vegetation here. No, they will. They will.
How do you know that?
Cause they said they would. They said lawn everywhere that is the proposed limit of disturbance will be lawn. It's in their documents.
They they they.
I'm just going by what they said. And go top of the site. It's natural that they would wanna do that.
They are making a. They are making a, um, I don't know if it's conservative or, or liberal is, is the right word, but, but they, but they would rather. Get an approval to, to do more and, and, and not necessarily do more than do less. And realize that they want to come back.
Well, it certainly looks like to me that they're gonna, to bring the lawn up to the riverbank here, because it makes sense with the topography.
I want his worst case scenario, if that's okay, let's say they did, and they removed trees, or along that silt fence line, that have. Um, roots that support that embankment, what is your concern that will happen?
So there are some still remaining, oh, my concern, if they remove all the trees, let's say, which they're not going to, but, but they're only leaving a very narrow swath. Of potential trees on this, on this gradient, this, this slope here, which slopes right down to the water here. They're only, you know, this is a narrow strip. I, I'm just.
Okay.
Not sure that, you know, once, if all these big trees are gone here, which I'm not saying they will be, cause I guess we're gonna go and talk about it.
Right.
But it's taken a lot for me to make that meet now and approve this.
With the condition, you are going to do the sidewalk with Dave and with um, Don. And you'll look at these things and, and Mike DiOrio, and, and have a conversation about it.
You have to approve.
And it's no, it can't be a conversation, cause we're talking about literally, this could potentially fail, this could just get eaten away by the river.
What would happen is, is if.
And then we could have approved it.
If, if there is, if there is substantive discussion. Where it is agreed that trees within an area are, where, where the applicant ha- has to. Um, act in good faith to preserve as many trees as possible within this area, that they would, a letter would be written.
Okay.
It, it wouldn't be something that's just verbal.
Okay, I at least wanna be on the same page with you guys, so, so we go to you guys' phone.
Yeah, I know, yeah, that's, what, what I'm just trying to see is like, if you have a concern, I wanna know what your.
So it's narrow here, this, where the, so the silt fence line and the limit of disturbance line, which are pretty much equivalent here. There is a peninsula here which juts out, they're gonna leave that forested, I understand, that's great, there's a bridge here that keeps getting broken away here. It's now here, lying sideways in the river.
I, I understand your concerns, but what, in, are you, do you have the information you need? We've written in a stipulation to address your concerns, and Dave has expressed to you that you guys are gonna walk the site. You were, you are personally gonna walk the site, Dave is telling you that you are gonna go out there and have a substantive con- substantive conversation about your concerns. Identify important trees and a letter will be written.
Here's, here's another condition that we can add, ready?
Yes.
So is that addressed?
Okay. And.
That, that's addressed.
Okay, so can we move on then, cause?
Hang on.
I'd like to close your concerns, so if we've got it, let's, let's not.
Hang on here, I have an idea.
So this is.
I have an idea.
So just, I'll stand by you a hundred percent, I just don't want you to get hammered for something that was, that was.
Ready?
Not within our period.
Yep.
Watch the screen, dude, watch the screen. Fire. Fire to the issuance of a zoning permit. The applicant shall conduct a pre-application or a pre-construction. Meeting. With the inland wetlands. Wetlands. Agent, to schedule. A sidewalk. Of the property. As further described. In condition. Number nine of this approval.
And then the only other thing is the lighting, that we really didn't get a good answer on what.
That works, Dave.
In such a.
I, I.
I understand.
Hang on, let's, let's see this one, wait on. I, I've got another idea. Fire. Watch the screen, prior to the issuance of a. Zoning compliance certificate.
It's like a.
I understand your concern.
It should be, we need to make sure, I think that it's more.
Um.
Than standard.
Uh, the property. Shall be inspected. To verify. That all. Construction activity are substantially complete. As, um, as depicted. On the submitted site plan sheets. This inspection shall include identifying. The location of any outdoor. Lights installed on any. Um, above ground structures on the property.
I mean, we're really, well, that's good, but we're really talking also about location, like you had written in your staff comments, but also the. In the, the intensity, the duration, and basically the color temperature too, because apparently I was reading that. That these bats are not affected by red light spectrum, but they are more so by a cooler light.
Okay, so, well, so, so the thought process would be.
And it's just, these guys don't seem like they don't care, and it's like, okay, well.
It's not that they don't care, and, and it's not that we don't care, I just remember. Here, we can enforce on paper.
But that's the thing, like, this is like part of the legal framework of their building permit, and that we are providing that for them. So.
See, they're gonna sell this in five years. New orders, that's, you know what I mean? We're allowing them to build it.
But this is part of the legal record, it's part of our legal record, that we did our due diligence on the part of the community and the natural community.
Oh, okay.
To address these concerns of, of this, of this super environmentally sensitive area, I mean, we've never seen an upland review area that encompasses our entire site almost. Like it surrounds the three sides now, we have a big responsibility to get this.
So, so there's a new condition that I've added.
That's all.
Fire to the issuance of a zoning compliance certificate, the property shall be inspected.
And when he writes.
By the inland wetlands agents.
Like, no.
That all construction activities are substantially complete.
Made a big difference for me?
As, as depicted on this submitted site plan sheets. This inspection shall include identifying the location and fixture type of any outdoor lights installed on any above ground structure and the properties, in other words. If, if, if there's a light that, um. The inland wetlands. Agents may, um. May direct a property owner to modify any light fixtures. As appropriate.
Yeah, like if you go, if you go through and we're walking in the wolf's ear, and we see that they've got some blue floodlight that's staying on all night.
But why would they do that? Why, why would they do that?
Kids, man, they're totally crazy.
Let's just say that you do anything they want.
They can, but it's gonna cost him money to run that blue floodlight all night long.
And this is an environment subsidiary, expensive area that we need to do whatever we can to make sure that that doesn't happen, specified by specifying.
It is possible that someone could leave their light on, but it is extremely unlikely that that is going to be a regular occurrence.
Uh, the, 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 this commission cannot deny someone the ability to enjoy the use of their property.
Yeah, that, that's where I'm fluctuating.
That, that, that is, that is a. Huge. Element to your wetlands regulations, and, and if you wrote a condition that effectively did that. This applicant could take this, uh, uh, this approval, appeal it, and, and, and. They would win however many ways to someday, just, just because you're, you're, you're effectively limiting how they can enjoy their property.
Isn't that our job when it comes to wetlands?
Um, yeah, cause there's rights.
Your, 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 your job is, is to.
We have the best to do that, like to steward the development, right?
Right, right, but, but, but in the process, in the process of doing that, you cannot deny someone enjoyment of a property.
I wouldn't dream of it.
But you kinda are, which I'm, listen, if I had to find my way, nobody moving anywhere, I don't like anything getting built anywhere, it can be nothing but woods. But.
No, we're just, we're tasked, as I understand it, still with, with, uh, you know, understanding the, the, the needs of each individual site.
Yeah.
And the parameters, and then doing what's best for the, the wetland and its constituents, right?
To bring it back to your reasons for denying the application, your reason for voting in opposition, you said you didn't have enough.
These points were not addressed sufficiently, right?
So we've now addressed two of them, did we address two of them sufficiently for your?
Can you bring it back up?
Yes.
The lighting in the, so the lighting in the, and they suggest, they said the bat houses that were, they're gonna.
Yeah, that's part of the, and, and, yeah, that's enforced, but we don't wanna do anything else.
No, so, so there's.
They have to follow those.
So, so this is, so this is what, this is what condition eleven is for, and I quote, the applicant shall adhere to all conditions and outlines as stated in the DEEP report. Quote Jennifer's Way, Bethel CT filing number one zero four zero five one NDBB. New determination number two zero two three zero eight nine six five, it is December twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, and if it's in there. That's what they're required to do.
Yeah, to avoid the use of pesticide is the main one.
Uh, uh, avoid is the operative word, but that is correct.
But that's, and we, we can't overs. The EPs. They have.
I just wanted that to be as part of the condition.
Yeah, it is, yeah, that very much is. I would be more nervous about the DEEP than Bethel and Wetlands Commission would be completely out of it.
What else is on your list?
Um.
A hundred percent be more nervous about that.
The trees, which I'm, do, the lighting, which. Um, we still don't know, cause they didn't really tell us.
They just wrote it to make sense and stipulate.
You're, you're, you're just gonna take that on, the inland wetlands agent you wrote.
So, I, I, I'm, I am putting the notice on myself to go out there and, and conduct a zoning compliance inspection on your behalf.
Post development.
So, so, so fire, so condition nine as it reads, and I quote. Prior to the issuance of a zoning compliance certificate, so in order, so in order for them to get a CO.
Hmm.
In other words, the property shall be inspected by the inland wetlands agent to verify that all construction activities are substantially complete as depicted on the submitted site plan sheets. This inspection shall include identifying the location and fixture type of any outdoor lights installed on any above ground structures on the property. The inland wetlands agent may direct the property owner to modify any light fixtures as appropriate.
That encompasses all of it at the end. Cause that gives you the.
So you'd rather do that in de facto, post facto, and see what they do first, rather than, rather than, yeah, provide guidance during the.
Well, if, if, if they want, if they wanna CO, they're gonna fix what I asked them to do.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise they don't get CO.
I mean, it, it's.
If you're good with doing that, then I'm, then I'm okay with.
Yeah, I, I.
Cause I know it's just up taking their words, and they said like, no heavy machinery, that's.
That's, that's.
Planning zoning. That's, that's also a zoning. So, so if, so if we get a complaint, it's a law, if, if we get a complaint that says. That, that, that property is being used to store heavy construction equipment and machinery, guess what? There's, there's a notice of violation that goes out, next number of days to remove the stuff on the property, otherwise season's assist, it goes through the zoning process. It, it, trust me, there's, there is heat there for them to not have stuff on the property that is not supposed to be there.
All right, you guys check my boxes.
All right, so.
So, what I will advise that we do, if, if the commission can humor me, just because we've tweaked the conditions so much. We just read through them just for the record, and I have them up on the screen.
Yep.
But I'll just read through them anyway.
Let's redo this one, okay.
One, our conformance guidelines, one. Construction, oh, don't worry, you don't have to, I just broke my. Construction practices shall be in conformance with guidelines as stated in the two thousand and four Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual and the two thousand and two Connecticut Guidelines for Storm Control. And Sedimentation Control, the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Two, any alterations to the approved final plan set excluding minor on-site changes such as erosion sedimentation control, south speech limits the permission for further review. Modification or permanent approval revision is located within a regulated one hundred foot, one hundred foot up and review and or wetlands area necessary. Alterations located beyond the regulator up and review area shall be reviewed by land use department staff. Erosion sedimentation controls, three. Erosion sedimentation control measures shall be inspected by the inland wetlands agent for appropriate installation before the commencement of any and all construction activities. Four, sedimentation sedimentation controls shall be maintained and fully functional throughout the construction process and until the site is fully stabilized. The commission indoor is designated agents reserve the right to require additional erosion sedimentation control measures as necessary. Construction slash mechanical equipment storage, number five. Any mechanical equipment stored on site during construction shall be monitored for leaks, punctures, or any failures that may cause fuel, oil, or any liquid that may adversely impact wetland function and habitat. Miscellaneous, six. Any and all sections of erosion sedimentation control devices shall be installed as shown in the site plan sheet set. Seven, the applicant shall limit the uses of any fertilization, fertilization materials to be non-synthetic. Eight, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the applicant shall conduct a pre-construction meeting with the inland wetlands agent to schedule a sidewalk of the property as further described in condition nine of this approval. Nine, prior to the, uh, well. Condition ten of this approval.
Ooh, wealthy.
Nine, prior to the issuance of a zoning compliance certificate, the property shall be inspected by the inland wetlands agent to verify the law construction activities are substantially complete. Depicted on submitted site plan sheets, this inspection shall include identifying the location and fixture type of any outdoor license installed on any above ground structures on the property. The inland wetlands agent may direct the property owner to modify any light fixtures as appropriate, this is why we reached these stuffs. Ten, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the property owner, the inland wetlands agent, Mr. Nicholas Jordan and Mr. Don Taylor shall conduct a sidewalk of the property to identify trees declared in those three minutes of the problem caused by the disturbance. Eleven, the applicant shall adhere to all conditions and outlines as stated in the DEEP report, quote Jennifer's Way, Bethel CT filing one zero four zero five one. NDBB new determination number two zero two three zero eight nine six five, end quote, dated September, December sixth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you.
Question, sorry, go ahead.
Can you go up, uh, scroll up to the number five there?
Yes.
Can we write any mechanical equipment stored on site during and after construction?
Well.
Or something like that.
They're, they're not allowed.
Do not keep that.
Yeah, per the zoning regulations, they're not allowed to store construction equip- equipment after their activities are done. Once, 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 the, the, the only reason, the only reason why you're able to store construction equipment on a property is if it's for the purposes of constructing on that property. If you are not constructing, you not have to keep.
Lots of people have their gear on the property.
If they do, then they're doing it in, 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 uh, in violation of the regulations.
There, there's a weight limit too, though, they have like a small excavator, it's fine, like one or small, like, uh, like four ton, like we have one of those.
Someone is allowed to have a commercial vehicle, a vehicle that is under the gross vehicle weight rating of eleven thousand pounds, and it can have no more than three ounces.
So that's the zoning thing.
That is a zoning.
That was correct.
So the verbage. The verbage that you used there, including three people on that sidewalk, what if one of them decides not to come at the last minute, does that impact the, the stipulation?
Oh, okay. Okay. Um. Shall have the ability.
Okay.
Yes.
To construct a sidewalk of the property to identify trees to be cleared in those three minutes of those incidents.
With you and the option for these two, two people to join or something like that?
Well, well, um, I, I'm sorry.
Well, you're gonna do it, right?
Right, yeah.
And.
I, I'm doing it, the property owner's doing it, Nico's doing it, and so is Don, if the property owner wants to have somebody else there, that's, that's at their discretion.
What if, say, Don doesn't want to do it at the last minute, does that impact the teeth of that stipulation then?
No, it's, it shall have the ability.
Great.
Yeah, he just updated.
Oh, I missed that, gotcha.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, that was my concern.
Okay.
Okay?
So.
Have all of your concerns been addressed at this time?
Better, yes.
Do you feel comfortable with this application as it stands?
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you want to discuss before we have another motion on this?
No.
What do I need to do to open a new motion and get rid of the old motion?
So the, so the old motion, that's, that's, that's done, because that, that vote failed.
Okay.
So if you wanna have a new motion, you essentially follow what the old motion was, so I, I.
Okay, I got it.
I vote to approve an application, or I, I vote to.
Prove the application for four Jennifer's way, for the regulated activities of four Jennifer's way, based on conditions. One through eleven as outlined in the draft proposal, and based on the reasons one through three of the. Draft resolution for approval as written.
Yes.
I second.
There's a second on the floor.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? And abstentions.
Which would be Laura first. Laura Ferguson, you abstained. Laura Ferguson, you abstain?
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes.
Awesome. That's good. I'm actually glad you stuck your guns.
Okay.
That's our jobs.
Yeah.
That would do the same thing if I felt that way.
But that's okay that we do that. That's what.
Yeah, that's.
The 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 motion, the motion failed. The motion failed. And and you guys, you you you're you're acting in in. I in the best efforts to to render a decision on this application.
Yeah.
You you guys had asked me to draft a resolution of approval that the intent for doing that was to approve this application at this meeting.
Good.
So there's there's no issue with you with you doing that.
Glad you were able to come to a consensus on it by offering it.
That's literally her job. I would have done the same thing if I felt that way, so. Don't worry. My time will come.
Hmm.
Okay.
All right, so moving along, we have a staff report up next on the agenda. Uh seventy seven Turkey Plain Road.
Yes, I had an agent approval for. Uh. The owner of Ferris Mulch Products Inc., if I'm getting.
Okay.
My uh what's your call is correct, I'm going to bring that up on the screen.
Yeah.
I know those guys. Uh, it's. Uh seventy seven.
Mr. Rodrigo is hanging in there.
Okay.
Jesus, not know what he was getting into tonight.
Eighty three Turkey. There we go, okay, so it's this property, nope, it's this property. Okay, so this is Ferris Properties L L T. I'm gonna bring them up here on the screen right now. Um. Essentially, the 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 pond for this administrative agent approval, the owner of the property where my cursor is right now with this large pond. Raised concerns about activity that was going on this property, so I went out, took a look, they were clearing some brush. In the area here where my cursor is. Uh, they needed an agent approval to do that, so they got one. There's a stipulation that the area where they cleared out the brush. And whatever growth was in there, they're going to reseed that with a wildflower slash conservation mix come springtime. They also did some other selective clearing in there to eventually to essentially remove some snags and other things that would, if they fell. Hurt somebody or damage the equipment and the structures that are out there. If you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
No.
Okay.
Definitely not.
Next thing. Um. Training opportunities, do not shy away from them, they are um plentiful and. More than useful for you guys. Um, there is one that's coming up this week, uh, I believe it's December fourteenth. It's remote. If you guys are interested, I could send you a link, I believe it's at night. Uh, all you guys will have to do is register and watch the races you guys can watch and. Uh, be enlightened with all kinds of knowledge that I may otherwise and I'm not already instilled upon you. Um.
I like all the training.
Sure, there's also the uh, well, this is more for the new commissioners than anybody else. Um, there's always opportunities for this uh clear, uh, the Connecticut Lands Education and Something Academy, I think. I'm getting my evidence right, it's late, my brain's fried. Um, so I would I would encourage you to look at those. Last but not least. Um. There are substantive updates to the Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. Uh, rewrite was just given to uh land use department officials through municipalities through West Cog. Um, the manual, the manual changes don't go into effect until next year. Um, but the updates, I believe, are in Google Drive for you guys to take a look at. I highly recommend you do that so you guys are familiar with uh, nope, that's something different.
Was it the updates or was it like, were they outlined, they were there, or was it the whole manual?
It's the whole manual.
It's the one which I we should we should.
Yeah, you guys do not do that.
Okay, so you gave that to it, that's there, we have that now.
Yeah, you should have that now, if you don't have.
And with that, that's the updated version.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you guys don't have that already, let me know, I'll get it to. The Indiana mail had in her hand, that's kind of like a brief T I V R on how to be an inland wetlands commission. So if you guys want to take a look at that, there's more, but the commission gives us support.
I have, I believe, okay, sorry.
I I I try. I try to give it every time there's a change in the commission.
Guys.
So it's more for the benefit of Jay. And Don than than anyone else, but um it's always a refresher for you guys. So all I have. Um, please tell me I wrote. Okay, okay, cool. Uh, that's all I have.
Moving on to commission comments.
Um. Uh, uh, Madame Chair had asked me to forward a document that she found. Do some research under the commission, it was part of the Google Drive. Unless you have any comments on it, I would just take, I would just advise you guys to read it and take a look at it.
So it was a a beginning pour into my concerns about an application that we saw where they're going to put any gravel drive and my concerns about them putting herbicides on there in order to manage under. Well, not under growth grass, but whatever weed grow through, and I feel like, just like Nico, you're exploring some things that you think are important for you to become more. Um savvy about, and I agree that we should be paying attention to these things that we have concerns over. I thought that was something that we should be concerned with as well, and that we should educate ourselves and learn what our parameters are.
But they kind of brushed that off as well, you know, as far as I can remember.
But in terms of comments here, that's an area where I would like to get more education, so I thought I would pass that along to you guys.
Yeah.
Okay.
Public comments?
Believe there was a gentleman who has been very, very patient, really patient.
All right, well, I appreciate your service, you know, it uh really comes. Uh, in a very, you know, highly needed watershed, you know, part of the Housatonic Watershed, that's the Still River and the Wolf Pit. Brook they've been talking about is in the Still River Watershed Management Plan, which we're always, you know, interested in mobilizing new energy. And I see a lot of potential in all of you, so I really am grateful.
Could you keep your name and your organization for the reference?
Absolutely, yeah, Rodrigo Pinto, the Connecticut Watershed Manager with the Housatonic Valley Association, H B A. Um, and what brings me to you today uh is actually that same Still River that the Wolf Pit, you know, uh is attributed to as well. But it's a different part of it, it's the Limekill uh Brook that goes through Macau Park as well as Bennett Memorial Park. And, you know, I have something that's not regulatory, it's really a minor couple of questions. In some ways, it's also a training moment for me to see, you know, how the commission typically works. Uh, so I've learned a lot, even liked me quite a bit, and so. Uh, the more sort of bread and butter questions I had um were. Such that I thought people like you might be the most likely people to estimate. Questions about the number of geese uh that have been uh using Bennett until we did a restoration there, so all of this is sort of. Positive, right? Unlike the kind of damage control mode that you operate in, you know, as a commission typically does. This is restoration work that was done in both parks, you may have seen them there uh in the dog park in Macau. We've installed uh three or four rain gardens. Uh, to minimize the pollution, both, you know, are minimizing mostly bacteria pollution. And so all we're trying to do is really get an estimate of how much restoration has accomplished in that spirit, you know, reducing the load of bacteria going to the water. Um, and so it's a simple kind of question of estimate, but I thought people like you would be the best people to ask, you know, since you might, you know, have. Your eyes and ears closer to the ground than we do when we occasionally get to go out there and and get work done. Uh, so two couple of questions, you know, one on the Bennett side of things. If you had to estimate just a ballpark figure of how many geese, you know, you've seen or heard, observed yourself, maybe seen traces of using that site. What would your ballpark be? Uh, it would be very helpful for us to have your sense of it. Uh, geese have, of course, been doing their business there, no one wants to swim in that, that's the bacterial load reduction for Bennett. The dog park, you could guess what that is, you know, the question would be how many dogs you, you know, guesstimate. You know, give a ballpark figure again on a daily basis for each site, what would your numbers be? Number of dogs at Macau, number of geese in Bennett.
Can can I jump in before you guys enter this question? Okay, so so Rodrigo, I I apologize, I I I um I received the email. That you had sent this past Friday to uh myself, our Parks and Recreation Director Rachel McGrath. And uh other officials here at 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 Town Hall, I I apologize for not having gotten a chance to respond to you sooner, as you can see.
No worries. I should have, I should have given you more, you know, more notice, longer notice, that's why I figured I should do my homework and show up here, as you've seen. As you've seen, we did do our homework looking around elsewhere, right? But this is one of those questions that no one else has answers. Uh, it falls between the Parks Commission, which I did contact along with you all. Uh, but you happen to be meeting within the timeline of when we were trying to get this work done, and so I thought it wouldn't hurt to get your estimates, you know, and it's nothing, again, regulatory. It's a, you know, a reduction estimate of how much good the restoration has done. And if you don't feel comfortable, you know, giving a ballpark figure, that's okay too, so no pressure either way.
Well, and you're looking at Macau as well as, did you say Bennett, like as in Bennett's Park in Richfield? I would be. Or Bennett's right next to Macau, okay.
Right next, yeah, the adjacent ones. And so that impoundment on the Limekill Brook is the one at Bennett, you you know, if you haven't been there recently, you know, you eventually see it, we've restored the banks of that, now it's basically. Uh, riparian buffers all around stagger, so there's still public access for anglers to be out there. Um, and so the idea is over time, you know, the line of sight of the geese will be disturbed. They'll feel that it's not a safe place for them to raise their young, and they'll just simply go elsewhere. It's one of the most effective strategies to deal with that kind of bacteria, you know.
I don't know that anyone on this commission would be in a position to answer your question because we're not monitoring those sites, so it would be anecdotal when we were out there. And I don't know that that'd be valuable data for you.
Yeah, if you haven't really been there that much, and if you don't feel like you can give, you know, sense of it, that's fine.
What what I can do for you, Rodrigo, if if Rachel McGrath hasn't already seen this email. I I I can reiterate, I can reiterate to her again that that you. Uh, are are trying to uh get these numbers uh in a timely fashion for some research, I'm assuming that you're. Uh, conducting on this property, um, as as I I between her and the Parks and Recreation staff that maintain that property. They they would, they would have the best knowledge for what affects the um. Uh, the the, well, the restoration and the low impact development technique. Uh, elements that have been recently recently improved improved to that property thanks to part of this commission. Uh, what what effect those have had on um. The the water course and the pond and and other um wetlands resources. Uh, related elements uh on that property.
I appreciate that, because I I know how busy her office is, we've worked very closely in each, you know, step of these restoration uh sort of milestones. Um, work on the ground with with McGrath, uh, so I appreciate it. Um, and and again, it's mostly in the Parks and Recs uh Commission. But since you all have this sort of more wildlife side, especially with the geese question, more so than the dog one, I thought, you know, it wouldn't hurt to ask.
From a geese perspective, I'm right next door, I only happen to know this because I I hunt and fish avidly, so I very, very pay very close attention to decent. Geese and duck flyways over where I live, which is. Probably about half a mile, quarter mile, I've seen less flow through, but that's also all waterfowl, that's not just geese. This year, I've seen less flow through from pathway. Over that area of Bethel, at least, doesn't mean that they're not going or going over a different flyway, but as a flyway, I've seen less waterfowl. Um, this season. So that's that's geese, ducks, and and anything al- along that migratory species, so, because I pay attention to that for hunting purposes, so. We we pay. You also, if you're concerned about geese, you might want to get in touch with local hunting and fishing. Groups, because they pay very, very close attention, because we have a lot at stake, we want that to thrive more than anybody, because uh we're. Our conservation efforts are extreme because it's at our best benefit to take care of all these species. We have personal investment in it.
Okay.
So, so I I'm not big, huge into waterfowl, but there are a lot of gentlemen out there that you can reach out to. In the local hunting and fishing community that can answer a lot of your questions on the migratory bird species, Bethel.
Fantastic, thank you. What would be one organization that I could try to reach out on the hunting side of things?
Um, a lot of people from Bethel Danbury area are part of the Harwington uh Rod and Gun Club. So then they have a lot of waterfowl, people that hunt waterfowl here in Bethel, Danbury, Richfield, and. The surrounding local areas, so they're 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 a good local start point, and the community talks a lot, so every one person there will guide you somewhere else too.
How do you spell the name of that organization?
Harwington, Harwinton? H A W, H A R W I N G D O N, I believe there's a G.
Okay, so because there's Harwinton in the town. Which is very far away. And then there's problem ten, which is the Rod and Gun Club.
Got it.
Then it's an N, okay.
Can I ask something? Well, we have Rodrigo here. Um, Rodrigo, are you, what's your role with the? The Hudson Valley, what is it, H V A?
Uh, H V A, it's mostly watershed management, uh, planning and and then implementation, you know, so. Uh, the planning of the Still River Watershed Management Plan has been done, I think the the plan was published twenty eighteen. And so in the implementation stage, but you know, each plan, uh. Whatever part of the Housatonic Watershed and the Still River is a key, you know, part of it for us, we're there every summer, we employ. Uh, in and around Danbury, you know, young high schoolers to get restoration like this done.
My cousin worked for you.
So I read, I had a chance, I stumbled across it online, um, in a previous, during, when I was researching for a previous application earlier this year, and. I found the Still River Watershed Management Plan that you, I guess you must have co-authored or something, and along with members of the town office here, I believe. Um, and it was really, I found it really, really interesting, very helpful, very informative and educational when it comes to watershed management and land use. Um, I was hoping I could maybe talk to you about it in further detail, I don't know if now's the time, it's ten thirty at night almost. Um, if you would join us maybe for another meeting one day. Or if I can talk to you separately and bring that information that I find that pertinent information to our commission, I'd love to find more ways to interface with. I think your organization, since it's a local organization, it's involved with watershed management, and I want to make sure specifically. Or should the commissions and public's approval, you know, that we're doing everything we can at our town in Bethel to make sure that our regulations and our approach is uh. As up to date and current and environmentally sound or and everything as possible can be.
Absolutely, I'm so.
I'm done, and we can talk.
Absolutely, and now, you know, through Dave, we have, you know, maybe Dave, if you could put the two of us in touch, you know, um. You know, maybe we'll set up a meeting, it doesn't have.
That'd be awesome, whenever you're free, I like I'm free during, whenever, um. Can I get your, I'll get your number from Dave and I'll reach out.
Absolutely, yeah, and I can, there's no chat, otherwise I'll type it in right now, but you know, it's also easy, my my address I can give you now is R P.
I'll reach out to you and then you can reach. With my information and then you'll get back to me when it's meeting, and we'll figure it out. There's nothing pressing, it's just a general.
Yes.
I think it's an opportunity, maybe.
And from our side as well, we're looking to get, you know, the plan updated, you know, uh, it needs to be updated really as soon as possible. Uh, this is a good time.
And we're dealing with, it sounds like we're dealing also with some updates to the stormwater manual, which I'm gonna familiarize myself with as well. Uh, okay, great. So awesome that you could be here and stay, stick around to.
You you guys are doing some good work too, my uh my cousin in Bethel did help your association last year or two years ago. As a volunteer. I I went from high school in his senior year in high school, so I'm familiar with some of the stuff that you've done.
I was gonna say, if you're if you're working with Rachel, um, I'd be down to volunteer to implement some stuff too, whatever you got going on.
That is fantastic, yeah, we'll definitely take you up on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know you do a lot of your time already on this, I won't abuse you.
I know, but.
Yeah.
I'm all in.
Yeah. You gotta be passionate about something.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for joining us tonight.
Welcome, thank you.
Okay, is it time? It's time.
Do we have any other owners on the agenda?
Well, we do have one more item on the agenda.
You want to check?
It's that one right there, that last one on the bottom.
Adjournment.
How's Laura doing? She's still.
There, did we have any other public comments? No one else is here, so.
Laura's on, Laura's here.
Notion that we adjourned.
Yeah.
Right.
Commission.
Second, second.
At ten seventeen.
I am assuming your hand is up, Laura.
It is.
Yep.
Aye.
All in favor? Hey.
Aye.
Oppose.